It was quite funny because I think the individual said, well, why don't you guys spend time catching the real thieves? Our response was, well, drug trafficking is a real crime. Yes, they did. Actually, they said, well, stuff like, you know, the theft and the break in enters. And we said, well, what drives the thefts and the break in enters? Well, normally it's drugs, right? So, yeah, they weren't very happy with us, but whatever. Tis what it is. That's right. Exactly. Exactly. So, yeah.
Any other questions? Counselor McGee?
We note that we have a new group out in front of the Conno Rest. And so I don't know if you're getting called on that, or whether there's anything that we can do, or and I haven't talked to anybody in the administration desk yet, but I am...
We have been involved in that, yeah. Because a health order was issued back in May, saying that it was unfit for human habitation. They had numerous opportunities to leave. They did not. So we went on Friday with the health inspector, and we basically moved them out. Basically said that they only had 24 or 48 hours in order to remove their belongings off of the exterior property. Now, there is a great big huge U-Haul out there this morning, which they had said they were getting, and they are moving all of that stuff to a storage unit. So it should be cleaned up by the end of today. And we are looking at the people that are on the top floor. We're trying to find some kind of accommodations for them because generally the whole building, that whole building needs to be fixed up. It's not suitable for human habitation. But we are working with Adam, the health inspector, as well as the town, in order to clean that up and the owners. So.
Counselor Dodds?
Just to add on to that, so we know who the owners are, and they've been contacted, and there's been, I guess, enforcement to community standards?
Yeah. Yeah. Perfect. Yeah. And we'll continue to work with them. And we're going to continue to work with trying to find places for the displaced individuals, right? So because unless you have some place for them to go, then it just adds to the other issues of homelessness.
So can I just follow up, Mr. Mayor, on that question of, so we will work with those individuals that are going to be displaced. Tell me what that means from an RCMP point of view.
Well, I mean, we are trying to find them places that they can go to live. We're not trying to displace them. We're not just kicking them out willy-nilly. We have been in touch with numerous groups to try and assist with regards to them having, you know, a place to live, whether it be a hotel room, whether it be, okay, we have tents, we have, you know, whatever, but someplace where they can go. We are, I think, we're going to be talking to Annette here shortly. So I'm not going to get into that just now. But, yeah, we're going to, we're trying our best to find them places where they can go and be safe. Because, well, the Conno Rest is not a safe place right now. So, yeah. And I mean, that's coming from a community perspective as opposed to simply an RCMP perspective, right? We're trying to work with everybody in order to find some kind of a solution for this so that we're not just increasing the amount of homeless people that we already have and need to deal with. So.
Any other questions? Counselor Peebles? Maybe you've answered this before. Did that furniture ever come in? The new furniture?
No.
Okay.
That actually, I had ordered it. They said everything was great. Everything was fine. It was being ordered. And then I phoned them at the end of March, and they advised me that the order had never gone in, and the person that I had been dealing with had since left. So, yes.
All right. Did you make a second order?
Not yet, no. Because it was now I have to, because it's a new budget year now, it has to, you know, yeah. So I have to wait a little bit before I can do that. So, yeah.
I shouldn't have at least said it was like in the Suez Canal or something like that, on that ship. You use that excuse.
Yeah. So, what am I going to do?
Any other questions? Going once, going twice? Anything else to add?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it. And maybe next month we'll know who the new staff sergeant will be. Thanks. Our second delegation is our very own Alvera Thompson with her Q2 financial report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So if you're looking at the page one there, you'll see nothing really out of the ordinary. We're right on track with year-to-date budget for most of our departments. So I won't really pick out anything from that first page. And then when you go to transportation, we're the 110,000 for road, street, sidewalks. You have 110,000 year-to-date actuals, but those are improvement levies that get adjusted at year-end. So that will, that won't be as high of a revenue amount. So that adjustment just hasn't happened yet. And then under the expense side of road, streets, and sidewalks, we are under budget by quite a bit for a few reasons. One being less snow, and Owen being really diligent at making sure that he knows where money is being spent. So repairs and P&amp;G accounts are actually under budget as well. And then airport there is over budget. That is, it's not really over budget, but we do process our payments ahead, one quarter ahead, so they can have it for their operating. And so that just kind of offsets there. Utilities, right where we'd expect them to be, where we'd want them to be, as well as community services. And then planning and development, there's a few things in that overall department. I guess you could say that we are under budget on, one being economic development, which is the energy falls into that category, and we have not spent even close to the funds that were budgeted for energy, as well as the zero tuition, zero fee. As you know, we're behind, like, we're not spending zero fee money just yet. And so education is under budget as well. And then Parks and Rec, on the next page, we have the library and culture. It appears to be over budget, but we also pay their spending or their allocation one quarter ahead as well, and that's the reason for that. And that brings us to the final summary page. So we are approximately $890,000 ahead of budget as of June 30th of this year. So it's really great news. Of course, a lot of our spending happens in the midsummer to early fall. So we will probably, that gap won't be as high for the whole year, but we are really optimistic that that's where it's at right now. And all the managers are doing just a phenomenal job at making sure they're keeping their budgets on track. And the next page is just some other financial information that I thought you guys would be interested in. As you see, our general receivables, they're lower this June than they were last June for a few reasons. There is some old accounts that we were able to clear up. Utility receivables also lower than they were last June. That one is due to the deferral program we had last year. And our taxes, they are higher than what we would want them to be. They're higher, they're not higher than they were last June, but because we had the deferral program as well, they're higher than they were last September. And part of that reason, of course, is some of our, some of the companies and individuals on our list are, they are accruing large amounts by not paying, and it kind of builds up year after year. COVID, the economy, there's multitude of factors, but we are currently working at sending proper correspondence to try to collect some more of those receivables. Under the other liabilities, we have deferred revenue. You see deferred revenue as of June 30th is significantly higher than it was as of March. And the reason for that is that we collected our gas tax funds, MSI, and our MSI funding. And so all that money we've received into our bank, but we have not yet spent, hence it's in our deferred revenue. Our debenture balance is slightly up from March, and that is because we received our equipment. Debenture got paid into our bank account, so our loan balance is a little bit higher. Bank balance significantly higher from $9 million to $16 million, and that's because we've been collecting a lot of taxes since March. And also grant money has gotten into the bank as well. So that's why our bank balance is higher. It's actually even higher as of today, but that's what it was at June. And our reserves, of course, they're the same as they were March. We don't typically adjust our reserves during the year very much. We wait to the year end and adjust the projects against the reserves as such. So not much to say in that regard. And then on the last page of my report is the capital budget summary. And so the ones I think you'll be interested in is the ones that are in red, meaning that they're over budget. The public works equipment is, there was operating funds available that Owen is using to purchase a piece of equipment. So operating funds will cover that, our operating budget that's not being used now. And in the high lift pump station, the reason why we are over budget there is because when I was cleaning up the receivables, I noticed that there was an amount on the receivable list from Shandos, and I started digging into it and realized that they had adjusted for that amount on one of our invoices. Didn't know. So as I was clearing stuff up, that is just one of those items that, it is what it is, I guess you could say. That is why. So that project is now done, complete, and we are submitting our final grant paperwork here next month. And then at the bottom there, you have wrap-up costs for prior-year projects not budgeted. So there was some projects in regards to the ring road and the trails that they were just kind of sitting there because project managers kind of had shifted, and we weren't sure where it was and who's part of the cost. They were ours or the county. And when we went to dig and make sure everything was wrapped up, it ended up being a further cost to us. That's some of it. There was some other ones that we just thought we were going to be done at the year end, and we're not. So that's what's in there. Current, or as of June, we had spent 2.5 million in capital projects. And as of the current, which was a week ago or so, we'd spent 3.2 million. So we have a lot of money left to spend on the capital. But that's, again, we do a lot of our work mid to late summer. So especially when it comes to the aquatic facility, I'm sure we won't have a problem spending that, right, Annette? And that's everything. Any questions?
All right. Counselor Peebles?
Thank you, worship. Just under the wastewater facility upgrade, the polishing cell there, I see we've only spent $18,000 so far. Is that still being done this year? The polishing cell?
Can you tell me the project number? I'm just trying to find all of this.
Oh, golly. 307?
We are spending money on it, are we not? Yeah.
Maybe the podium, yeah.
Yeah.
Better. Sorry.
60 commissioning. So the $18,000 is just the start of it, but the invoice should be done within about a...
Okay. Thank you. And just one more on town revitalization. What is that? Here, March 4th, $143,289.
Yeah, so we had, that was leftover from last year. It was just a carry-forward project. And I believe we were going to paint the light poles, yeah.
Okay. And is that still slated to happen this year? Because I know that was a pretty big, that's a pretty big job.
Yeah, that's something that's going to be discussed here shortly going forward. But that's what that is. Yeah.
Counselor Dodds?
So just going back to general revenue, can you just do a breakdown of the franchise fees again for me? What's included?
It's the Atco and Fortis franchise fees.
Just the two?
Yes.
Okay. And then just further down, when we're looking at protective services for bylaw, does it seem that, I guess our enforcement is down slightly? Like, I'm just, I'm just asking that because, you know, we're getting lots of, I guess, calls and inquiries into unsightly premises and community standards and things like that. So I know we've talked about, you know, increasing enforcement. Do you think that this is down? Or, like, I know that we're only in August right now. It just seems like...
Our bylaw enforcement revenues are not down. They're ahead of what we budgeted because of additional fines and all that kind of stuff. So I'm not too sure where we're at with actual, with actual handing out tickets, but it would seem like we're collecting more. So I'm imagining that he's writing more.
Our CPR officer is indeed writing more tickets.
Yeah. So educating and enforcing both?
Absolutely. Yes. Yeah. Between the warnings, of course, but there are tickets. Ever since he received his full designation, it gives him that, the ability and the capacity to then do some of those ticketing. So, yeah, we have been seeing tickets laid out.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. I really like the layout. It's nice. It's easy to follow like this. I was wondering if you would be able to maybe add a column on the project list of if they are complete. As some of them, like the signage at the OmniPlex. It looks like most of it is spent, so maybe it was just a little under budget, but I'm not sure if the project is complete or not. So.
Sure. Absolutely. That's just very simple. Yeah. If I go down this list right now, the port of count fit testing equipment is complete.
It's half-funded by the county?
Yes, half-funded by the county. The signage is done. Compliance, it doesn't show here, but the compliance that has been spent now to date, but that's not, wasn't done there. Yeah, all the other ones are still being in progress. So it's really only those two. Yep. True. Public orgs equipment's also done. Yes. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? Counselor McGee?
Morning. What I, I want to just try to understand the whole tax thing. So, remind me, did we defer again? And if not, everything should be in by June 30th. And so when we look at that number of tax receivable of three, so just talk to me a little bit about that. Just expand a bit.
So, yeah, so we didn't defer. So everything should have been in by June 30th. So we did a penalty on July 1st, July 2nd, I guess, this year. We did do a penalty. So we would have liked to see that balance be lower. Now, about a million dollars, more than a million dollars is old amounts that we are working on, whether it be tax sale or some sort of arrangement. So if you take that into account, we'd be seeing it probably still over $2 million. And that's just people are starting to fall behind on their taxes and stuff. Just...
Yeah. So that's what I really want to know. Is that this year, the last year where there was this, and this year it seems a little heavier?
It is a little, yeah. So we are seeing a few more. We're working on them. We're having quite a few people create a payment plan. And so that is, the MGA does allow us to do a payment plan and keep people off the actual tax sale list if they have a plan in place. So we're seeing people sign up, and Leah is actively working on that. So we're hoping to get that number down. But, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Kamana?
Thank you. On the capital budget side, we have that snow dump site, and just wondering what's our plan, you know? Hopefully we won't get snow soon enough, but when that happens, so how do we roll that out? And if we have a plan for that?
So as it stands now, we might only use a small portion of that for our current snow dump, and then we probably roll into the following year for something else. And these plans change.
Thank you.
Counselor Bellas?
Thank you. Can you, or do you have an estimate of what portion is residential and what portion is commercial in regards to receivables for tax?
I can look that up. I don't know that off by memory, but I can look that up and send it to you after or during the meeting.
Do you just have an idea for residential as a higher portion?
We are starting typically... We are starting typically residential is where a larger portion of it is. We are seeing some, you know, as a, as a number of, of delinquents, we'll see residential be a higher. But as a total of the receivable, the commercial typically takes that because we have large balances for commercial. I'd say they're pretty evenly split, but I don't want to say that too confidently, but, uh, we are seeing commercial, um, more and more commercial, our, our businesses on that list. But I will send that to you as soon as I can grab the actual information.
Okay. Um, one quick question. So going back to Tom's question about the tax receivables, what was the interest penalty that we had for July 2nd?
Five percent on, on the, the June penalty is five percent of the levy. And then in January will be fi, uh, will be 15, is it 15? 15% of the balance. So our big, big penalties in January. So we're that we will send a letter out and warn everybody here in a little while to make sure they come and pay before that. But yeah, 5% of the levy.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. We will move into our decision items. Uh, 6.1 Town of Drayton Valley Clean Energy Improvement Tax Bylaw 2021-11-8 presented for first reading.
Good morning, council. So we are presenting the SEEP bylaw for your first reading today. Uh, we had a pretty good discussion on this at the last GMP. And, um, like I said, the bylaw, this is the first step towards the whole program. We have to go through program design after this. So the bylaw is designed to be as flexible as possible while still meeting our regulations. I should have included the changes inside the update itself, but I only have a sticky note. So we'll just go through the sticky notes pretty quickly today. Um, Sabina, if you can change to page 31. Okay. So one of the main discussions were the eligibility requirements for the owners who want to do the PACE program. Uh, in case you were not at the last meeting, the PACE program or the SEEP program is a way to provide a financial, um, financing options for property owners to put renewable energy and energy efficiency upgrades to their home or property or business, and they will be repaying it through their taxes. Um, sorry, page 31. Okay. So since this is going through our property taxes, uh, we could actually set the eligibility requirements as long as it follows the regulations. And one of the things that was a bit of a longer discussion the last time was on the tip requirement. We wanted the program to be as flexible as possible. So we removed the tip requirement from the bylaw. But we might still discuss it during the program design. The second one was from Counselor Gamanna. Um, you were asking about the credit checks. Um, there is a fee to it. So we kind of reworded the last two requirements instead of you have to provide a SWAN statement, you may be asked to provide documentation. So in that sense, they can either give us a SWAN statement or a credit check, which will be on their own cost rather than administrative cost. Then there's, uh, if you go lower, there's a maximum allocation for each year, how much we want to put into the program. So previously I think we had about $300,000 for residential. When we did the, um, projections of how much we want to spend each year, it was actually coming up to 300 plus. So we just increased it to 400,000 just to put in that flexibility there. Um, another thing that is within the RFD itself, um, in the previous discussion, we said it as if we get FCM financing, we will go through with this program. But I'm still hoping that there will be other types of financing, maybe from the province that will pay for the administrative costs of the program. So I don't want to tie the program to FCM. Let's hope something else comes up, then we can go with that as well. Another question from Counselor Gamanna was the warranty portion. Uh, it's actually covered in the legislation where if, uh, there is no warranty, the contractor has to provide warranty for at least one year. And anything else is transferable to the property owner. So that is within the regulation. Actually, I'm sorry, didn't notice it the last time. Okay. Uh, last one was, uh, Counselor McGee, you asked about how do we talk to contractors, business owners within town? Um, we thought we wanted to until we have a bylaw before we started, um, connecting with business owners. But after thinking about it, we, you know, since we have the public hearing coming up, we could now send the letters to contractors to inform them that this is coming. They might want to get ready, um, you know, get their licenses ready to get their registration ready so that when the program comes in place, they are already good to go with the program. And within the same package, we will also add other initiatives, other programs that province and federal has. Um, there's a whole bunch right now, so we will put it in the information package. So our contractors are up to date on this kind of information. So yeah, so that's my list on what are the changes within the bylaw and RFD. Any questions?
Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. People that have the bank pay their taxes on a monthly basis. Can this program be added so that the bank now pays the payment, makes the payments as well?
Uh, I guess it would be, I'm sorry, I don't understand. Do they have already the bank to pay certain upgrades and then they go through this program?
Yeah. So, so some people who have mortgages include in their mortgage payment taxes. So can this be included?
No, it's going to be separate. Just yeah, I was changing to that one. Yeah.
Counselor Peebles? Just, uh, from a real estate perspective, so if somebody does all the upgrades, lives in house for a couple of years and then sells it, is it, is it marked differently on the taxes? Just so there isn't any confusion, but how come my taxes are more than these guys? Just based on how it shows up on your tax bill? Like is it? Would be pretty clear? Oh, she's walking.
Um, sorry, just to add on to that, we've talked to a couple of real, it realtors as well. They said that if we could just give them a sort of pamphlet that they can share with, uh, prospective buyers on houses that do have this levy on them. What are the benefits? That would be helpful.
So just while you're there. If I take out a hundred thousand dollars, it's going to go against my property tax or against my property. It'll be registered. But I sell my house five years or two years down the road. Who does the accounting? Because that, the balance is going to be transferred to the next owner. So who, who does the accounting and knows precisely what's left going? As a bank does a mortgage, you know, what I can follow the bank and see this is my balance, uh, more, balance of my mortgage.
Thing to do to their house. Um, that will determine the length of, um, so let's say it's a, you're repairing or you're replacing your hot water tank. Um, and they say that it's a 15 year lifespan. So they will do a calculation based on that to say like, so that the benefit of that improvement will be paid for by the person that is benefiting from it. So the person that's living there. So then we will work, us as an administration will work with SEEP, um, to determine what you're eligible for and how long to calculate it over. And there's like a max. So a residential wouldn't be, I know that that was just an example, but there is a limit to what you can do. So, so your, how much energy savings you can do? You can have, it's supposed to be offset by that expense and over that timeframe. But that will be done on our end.
And that's my question. Are we responsible? Are we using our administration to administer the program so that we know every time there's a payment taken? Then that hundred dollars is going to come off and here's your balance.
Yeah.
So administratively, we're responsible.
Right. For collecting. Yep. So
That would be a lot of work, isn't it?
Um, yes and no. I mean, once the initial, it's not a lot of work. The, the initial part of it and the calculating and all that kind of stuff, that is kind of where the work lays in. But once, once that is done, it's all automatic in the system. We don't have to do anything beyond that. So it's just like if a company does an improvement levy or wants to build a road and, and we give them money for that, we don't, there's not a lot of work after the fact. It's calculated and then they pay it every year. And once the term expires, then their taxes are just going to go back down.
And if they go into arrears? Who's responsible?
Owner. Owner of the home.
It would still be the same.
After collecting it?
It would be no different than if, uh, somebody was going on taxes in the first place.
Yeah.
Same. Same pers, same process, counselor.
So their taxes would never be more than double what they are. So the improvement levy would never make your taxes more than double. So if your taxes are $2,000 a year, the maximum, uh, improvement levy a year would be 2,000, which we wouldn't expect it to be that much in many cases anyway, but that's what, that would be your max. So that's kind of to try to limit the uncollectible, uncollectible, um, amounts. But yeah, it would work exactly like, uh, taxes. So if there is an unsightly premise or, um, we have to act on collecting, we can add those types of items or utilities that are outstanding. We can add that to the taxes and collect and we can take the same, uh, we have the same legal recourse for that, uh, as we do the actual levy. So we'd take the same process as we would now.
That's really not what I'm trying to get at, but I appreciate what you're saying. I understand that. Uh, what I'm trying to say is that if I take out a hundred thousand dollars and two years later, I want to know what my balance is. Are we the ones that are posting the payments, saying this is now your balance? And who's going to be doing that?
Doesn't work like a traditional loan in that sense. It works like an improvement tax. If you want to know, I can go back and calculate it. I don't
There is interest paid. They're paying 5% interest, right?
Only if they don't make their payment. Only if they go into arrears.
Interest free loan?
It's, it's calculated once at the beginning.
Yeah. I mean, I worked in the bank and how loans work. So I, I want to know who's going to administer, who's going to post the payments? And who's going to monitor it and be responsible for it? Is it our staff that's going to do that? And if it is, who's going to be doing it? Finance?
Um, sorry, uh, Counselor Ballas, just to be, just to put this into context. The first year, we're only expecting about 10 applications or 10 projects going on. So it would not be adding that much onto the administrative burden. At the same time, we are getting support from the SEEP team at AMSC. And they will be setting up all the processes. So we just need to do the due process. And, uh, the last time, I'm not sure if you're asking if we want to transfer the loan to the next owner. Then they just take up the taxes? Is that a question? Or if, if you're, or you're saying that after two years, you want to move out and you want to pay off the whole amount? Yeah. The balance is transferable to next owner.
Well, so therefore you, you must have a program on your computer then, which is a loan program.
It's, it's a improvement. It's an improvement tax is what it is. It's, it's, it's essentially we are giving them a loan, but we're adding the improvement onto their levies over a certain period of time. So it's all in the system. It's all going to be a part of our tax collecting system in Serenic.
So just, just my thoughts, I think it's what's going to happen is that when the homeowner gets the, the loan and it, it will be there that you'll be paying for next 10 years, right? And if, if the, uh, ownership changes after two years, the new owner will know that he has to pay for the next eight years. Is that how it's going to, and then on your system, it will say for the next eight years, the new owner has to pay this amount going forward.
Yep.
Okay.
It becomes their new taxes. That's what their taxes are. There's no calculating it every year. There's no, um, um, additional calculations. It's just the initial us working with SEEP in the initial, um, when their application gets approved. Uh, and then from there on, we can, we can certainly tell them what the difference is between what their levy is and what their improvement is. That's, that's very simple. That's not a difficult, uh, thing, but it would be finance that would be giving that information if a property owner were to want like, want, want that information.
So, yeah, um, you know, going from that, my concern is, um, let's say, um, somebody buys house and, and mortgage and everything, and they calculate the, um, ability to pay the mortgage from the, uh, amount, purchase amount on taxes. And then the realtors go through the process and, um, this is on top of that. So this payment is, so how my concern is, you know, would, would that person would be able to pay another $2,000 on top of $2,000 and, um, you know, would they be eligible for a mortgage with that information?
Typically, um, from my experience, the property tax amount would, would not, um, be a factor in their ability to get a mortgage. Um, however, when you do list a property, typically almost always you will see and, uh, on, on the real estate page, it'll say what the estimated property taxes are. And I imagine that the realtors are getting that information from our tax searches. So it would state what the estimated property taxes are. So the owner should be aware of it before they make the purchase. If they don't, are not aware of it until the lawyer step, on signing step, they will definitely know at that step. Whether, what the property taxes are and what to expect.
Thank you. Sorry to go to gritty, gritty stuff.
Counselor Peebles? The county has a program like this. Haven't they had it for a number of years with their solar?
Uh, they do, but theirs is a rebate program.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think they are financing it a different way. This is through the, uh, province and hopefully federal as well.
Okay. And then there's grants for some of the solar stuff that people are putting on their houses as well?
Uh, I think there's been fewer grants for solar itself. So this would be more of a loan rather than an actual grant.
All right. And really my only thought, other thought was how about disposing of the solar panels? So the town adopts this program. We're super excited about it. Everybody throws solar on your roof. Then we can't dispose of it. Then we'd have a problem. But is there any issues at this point with disposing of solar panels?
Uh, not yet, because, uh, solar panels, once there's enough that there is an issue, someone will come in and actually put up a solar recycling facility and it's basically, uh, breaking it down into the different components at which can still be reused, like copper, glass, so materials that can be reused.
Yeah. And, and we're not expecting like a thousand houses are going to adopt this program, right? Like this is
Total for four years is 48 houses, 48 properties.
That's what we're projecting?
Yep.
Okay. And, uh, is that based on similar sized municipalities? I see some of the names here. Okay.
Similar sized municipalities, um, how many pass participation in Drayton Valley on energy efficiency rebate programs? And other programs, population, so those kind of numbers that go into the numbers here.
And, uh, on the realtor front, I think it'd be pretty easy if, uh, like you said, if there's some pamphlets, a couple of discussions and they just knew if you see solar panels on the roof or you see some of these high efficient, just ask the question. That'd be easy. So I'm in favor of this. I think it's great.
You'll be glad to do that. Awesome.
Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. I think it's an excellent program. I, I just don't want our administration to get tied up into a whole bunch of time consuming efforts to do this. And, and, cause obviously we're going, we take the application. Uh, we have to do the credit checks. We, so
Um, sorry.
We have one person that's going to be doing that.
So, Counselor Ballas, uh, it's going to be actually the SEEP administration at AMAAMSC that does that. Who does all the application, the approval and, uh,
And where do they get their revenue from? Cause I can see they can charge up to 5% or a hundred dollars application fee. So they're going to get the revenue?
Yep. They're going to get, we're going to come up with a master agreement program between us and the program administrators. How many percent each of us are going to get? But we are hoping that if we get the FCM grant or any other grant, that administrative fee for the first four years will be paid for.
Okay. Uh, secondly, the, the amount of money that, uh, we're sending, uh, what $400,000 roughly you're estimating for the first year?
Uh, 200,000.
200,000. Is that coming directly out of our budget? Is, is that coming out of our line of credit?
Line of credit. And it Line of credit, and it will not be on our debt service.
Yeah, I understand it's not there, but there are going to be interest charges on that two hundred thousand dollars.
I'm sure, probably yes.
Right? So how are we getting, covering our interest charges?
By the administration fee and also the FCM grant.
And also when we set the financing loan as well, right, will, whatever we get set by the bank, that will be what we set to the property owner as well. So it's going to be a cost by straining. Does that make sense?
They're doing the application process and then telling us who qualifies. And then we have to say yes or no based on our history with that individual or business. And then at that point, the, it gets approved or not approved. And this is all going to be, we're not going to be, this is, I'm not expecting to use our own, like, line of credit. This is going to be an FCM loan grant. And if we don't get it, then we have to reevaluate whether we even want to do this program or not. Yes.
All right. Oh, Councilor Peebles.
Final, Mr. Mayor, is it fair to say that the administration is supporting the program? It's fluid in some ways. We'll, we'll find out as we go. It just makes sense. The nitty gritty, as Councilor Gomana talks about, it's, it's there. It's been examined. But at this point in time, the support from administration is, let's proceed ahead.
I, I can speak to that. I know that the Sustainability Committee, as well as administration, general managers have been over this program with Aisha, and she has brought forward the information as we see. I understand Councilor Ballas's questions, and, you know, certainly this program has been instituted in other municipalities. It's been well thought out through the provincial-led department as well, too. And we feel that there's an opportunity for our community to really take advantage of the energy efficiencies going through this program. The fact that it does not have a financial impact on our municipality, either with the administrative side, not as significant, because SEEP itself does provide some of the administration. There's a little bit on our part, but it would be no different than if we provided an incentive to other community members. So, yeah, your administration is supportive of this program.
All right. Any other questions for administration? Is there a council that would like to make a motion for this? Councilor Wheeler?
Sure. I move that council give first reading to the proposed Clean Energy Improvement Tax Bylaw 2021-11A.
Okay. Thank you very much. Actually, one thing I want to clarify just for anyone listening online. Just, we don't trigger any residents with headlines in the newspaper, "Town approves Clean Energy Improvement Tax", and you know the backlash we'd see with that. Just please take the time to read through this agenda package and the actual bylaws. This isn't a tax that we're, we're putting on the residents. It is availability of a program which will allow residents in our community. If it makes it to second and third reading, this is just the first reading. So I won't get ahead of myself. Just to make sure that you understand, it's just a program that our residents can avail of if they want to increase the energy efficiency of their home and just have the levy put onto their tax bill, so they don't have to pay for it all upfront. So we're not taxing our residents with a clean energy tax. So just for clarification's sake. Any comments, questions, or debate on this? Had a lot of questions.
Sorry, can I just add that it's fully voluntary?
Yes, it is.
It's fully voluntary.
Hundred percent voluntary. So the motion is for to give first reading? All in favor? That is carried, and we'll probably see a, will there be a public hearing on this, or will it just be some open house? Okay. All right, six point two, Town of Drayton Valley, Brazzo County Intermunicipal Development Plan, IDP, Bylaw 2021-9-D, presented for first reading.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
Administration brings to you this morning the draft intermunicipal development plan, IDP Bylaw 2021-09D, between the Town of Drayton Valley and neighboring Brazzo County for first reading. So an IDP is a policy document that promotes collaboration and communication between the town and Brazzo County within an area around the border, which is the plan area, on topics such as land use, transportation, the environment, economic, and social development. The IDP also establishes criteria for referral of developments within the plan area on either side of the border. That is the referral area. So prior to this draft being presented today, Town Council adopted IDP 2020-03D at a regular meeting of council on March 18th, 2020. However, because Brazzo County decided to table the IDP as Bylaw 1049-20 at a council meeting held in April 2020, the existing IDP 2011-17D remained in effect. So this was the IDP that was there prior to this new IDP. So the main point of contention in the new IDP for the county was the extent of the plan area. As part of the co-mediation process for the intermunicipal collaboration framework, plan area was agreed upon by the negotiating teams for the town and the county. So the differences between the IDP 2020-03D that was adopted by council and this draft-proposed IDP as follows. So the plan area and referral area are now one in the same area, just to avoid the confusion that was there before. See attachment two of your agenda packages for the map that was there before and the new, new map. So as a result, the town referral area on the county side got bigger, and the county's referral area on the town side got smaller. The plan area on the county side got reduced by roughly half, and the plan area on the town side remained the same. There were also changes to the text as a result, describing the plan area and referral area, as well as changes to all municipal government board references to the Land and Property Rights Tribunal. The provincial government amalgamated a number of boards, including the MGB, into the Land and Property Rights Tribunal as, in an effort to reduce red tape. And that is the end. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Okay. Any questions for administration? Councilor Gomana?
Thank you. Yeah, you explained very well, you know, what are the differences between the, the previous IDP that we had and the IDP that town passed, but county didn't, and then the, the new one, right? So just from my understanding and also the understanding of the community, what are the impacts that you think that this will create from the, the previous IDP or the, the referral and, and planning areas that we had in 2011? And then the, the change that we did in 2020, and what you're presenting now?
Thank you for the question, Councilor Gomana. I, I think in, in our administration's opinion, there will be little to no impact in, in, in these areas. So it's, it's just, so, so previously, we, we had an arbitrary line that was carried on from the annexation discussions that was just drawn arbitrarily, and nobody really knew why it was that size. And then once we had the open house, it was discussed a little further and determined that the best plan area border would be what is presented today. So I don't think it's of any significance, significant consequence that the plan area has been reduced.
If I may, so I'm just trying to understand, you know, why are we going through this process and changing this if there's no impact at all? You know, in your mind, I believe this was a proposal from the county, right? Coming to us for changing this. Why would there be a change request if there's no impact at all?
Right. So I think part of the, part of the issue was, when it was first presented, the, a lot of the county residents perceived the plan area as a way for the town to annex more land. That's where the, the point of contention started. So as a result of that, it was decided that the, the plan area should be reduced. And, and when I say there's little to no impact, I mean on the, on the town side of things.
Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot, but thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Councilor McGee?
Mr. Mayor, I, I would make that motion that we, that council give first reading to propose Town of Drayton Valley, Brazzo County Intermunicipal Development Plan, Bylaw 202 slash 09D as presented.
All right. Any comments, questions, or debate? Councilor Peebles?
I am in favor of this going forward, but just to comment, giving up that referral area was done in good faith. It was something that we said, hey, we're working together to reduce red tape in the community. We enjoy doing business together. We want to have a better working relationship. So we didn't have to reduce it. It's written to the annexation agreement. But we did it to say, hey, why don't we, let's work together. Let's, let's see what we have to do. It's very unfortunate that we haven't seen that reciprocated through the recreation conversations that we're still having. But in general, I guess if this is kind of our olive branch to say, hey, ultimately, we don't want to slow down economic development or development of our region. This is, I guess, the statement that we're making.
So I have Councilor Ballas and then Councilor Gomana?
Thank you. I, I believe this was part of the mediation process as well. Second concern I may have is, has the county approved this, their bylaw, their portion side of it?
Thank you for the question, Councilor Ballas. So the county did give their version of the IDP first reading at a council meeting last week, I believe, or the week before. Yes.
Councilor Gomana?
Thank you. Yeah, you know, the, I, referral and, and planning area is part of the IDP. It's not the whole IDP. So my concern is about that, that piece only. I'm in favor. And like Councilor Peebles mentioned, you know, if it is in good faith, we, I just wanted to let the committee know how we are working with the, with the county as well to, to work with them to actually hold their hand in, in, at some cases, to, to make this relationship work. My, still, I have a concern with the referral and planning areas. They are in place for a reason in my mind, that bordering municipalities will work together if there's a new development coming, that, you know, they would inform and be respectful of what's happening on, on their borders. So I ha, I have, I have a very strong concern with, with that change, even though administration mentioned that there's not much of an impact on that. But other than that, I'm in favor. I would like our recording secretary to record my, my concern on, on that piece alone, but the rest, I'm in favor of IDP. Thank you.
Councilor McGee?
Just a question on timing. So first reading, do we expect to have this wrapped up before October? Or are we waiting till the finish of the arbitration discussions, sir?
Thank you, Councilor McGee. The way that we work through the advertisement and then, of course, coming back for second and third reading. And again, too, it will be dependent on what we do receive for comments, but we do expect that this will go through. We are not depending on the arbitration decision in order to have this go through.
So municipal elections in October, we'll, we'll have this done before then?
Anything else? Councilor Wheeler?
Just a point of clarification. Usually, we can't make notes of people's opinions or thoughts on things because we are as a whole as council, but you can ask for the vote to be recorded before we take the vote if you'd like to. So it's documented.
Yeah, the, the problem is that the, we are discussing IDP, right? You know, I'm, my concern is on one piece of that. Right? That, that's the thing, you know, I'm not, not in favor of the IDP. It's just the one piece, right? So that's why, how do we go about, you know, raising my concern? I've already raised my concern in public, and I'm sure the community is hearing and the media is here. So, you know, that piece is fine, you know. Yeah, it's, it's up to the administration how it records or not records. My concern, I've raised.
Okay. All right. So the motion is that council give first reading to propose Town of Drayton Valley, Brazzo County Intermunicipal Development Plan, Bylaw 2021-9-D as presented. Nothing else? All in favor? That is carried, and we will just go to six point three before we go for a break, just because we do have someone patiently waiting in the audience, and I don't want them to have to wait another fifteen minutes because you guys can't take timely breaks. So with that, six point three, Direct Control One, DC One Commercial Farmers Market Bylaw 2021-6-D, presented for first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So administration received an application from the Drayton Valley and District Agriculture Society to use the parcel at 5015 Industrial Road as a permanent year-round location for the farmers' market. See attachment one for the location and zoning. So farmers' markets bring many benefits to the community, and the town is committed to supporting the initiatives, initiatives such as farmers' markets. Administration also recognizes that farmers' markets generate more traffic than an ordinary business, and therefore, there's a need to ensure that potential negative impacts to surrounding landowners are mitigated as much as reasonably possible. So the main challenge for the applicant is that the proposed location is not big enough to properly accommodate the parking requirements, as well as movement of vehicles onto the site and back onto Industrial Road. So it's a C attachment eight. As such, the applicant is making arrangements to secure more parking off-site through communal parking agreements, and has proposed a one-way access onto the site from Industrial Road and exiting onto the back alley. So the subject parcel is zoned general commercial district. Due to the unique nature of a farmers' market, that's unlike any other defined land use. Section 5.4F of the town's land use bylaw requires a parcel to be rezoned to direct control district prior to use as a farmers' market. Direct control districts provide for development that due to unique characteristics, innovative ideas, or unusual site constraints, require specific regulations unavailable in other land use districts. The proposed control, the proposed direct control district one was discussed at the May 25th Governance and Priorities Committee meeting and is presented today for first reading. And it is attachment six, which is the draft bylaw 2021-06D. So the draft bylaw is based on meetings and correspondence between the town and the applicant. I would also like to add that the intent of the applicant is to host smaller markets than those usually hosted at the live church. Uh the larger markets will be hosted at the Mackenzie Center, Life Church, and other adequate locations. The purpose of the DC one district is to provide flexibility by uh permitting farmers market. Uh additionally, other land uses um that are permitted on discretionary in the uh general commercial district are also added uh to prevent future rezoning, just in case um um the applicant decides to to sell uh this parcel to uh another individual. Um development permits, application decision powers are proposed to be delegated to uh the planning and development officer and senior planner for permitted uses and variance applications less than thirty percent for permitted uses. So so the decision um making powers remain the same uh as uh in other land use districts. Um that is the and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Questions for administration? Counselor McGee?
Just a quick uh question again on timing. Um so we're looking for first reading today. Um farmer market, farmers market continues its process and continues to work uh within the community. Um uh is there a need to to press ahead uh in the second and third or it's it's process will be then? Tell me a little bit about the process or anything.
Yeah, sure. Thank you for the uh question, uh Counselor McGee. So uh do you mean uh second and third reading today or? No, yeah, okay, so I understand. Um uh so there is still a requirement to advertise to surrounding landowners for at least uh fourteen days.
Counselor Dodds?
I just want to say I'm excited to see this uh finally come here. I know it's been a long time coming, and there's been a lot of discussions going back and forth between um um the Egg Society Farmers Market and and yourselves. Uh I just want to know that, do you feel that um that I guess that um the requirements and that um that the Egg Society or Farmers Market, I guess, within the discussions, do you feel like both parties' needs are being met through this proposal?
Thank you for the uh question, Counselor Dodds. Uh I I believe so, yes. Uh we um have had a few meetings and correspondence between us, and I feel like uh uh the regulations that are presented today are agreeable to both parties.
Okay, Counselor Kamana?
Thank you. Um just from my understanding, um Ronnie, um so this bylaw is for that particular building? Right?
That is correct.
We are just changing the zoning because of the current zoning. But if if the farmers markets would like to uh proceed in a different location uh as they've uh proceeded uh before, you know, in the downtown area or another area, um this won't stop them from doing that at all, right? And they can keep proceeding with the the same event uh approvals and all that, and then proceed to have farmers market anywhere in our community.
Yes, that that is correct. So so this um bylaw only affects the specific site. So if the farmers market wants to have an event at the uh Mackenzie Center or the Life Church or a special um event downtown, they this does not apply to that.
Thank you. Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. I I noticed that in the package that letters were sent to uh surrounding businesses, and there were really no concerns other than from mixers, perhaps on a Wednesday, that it might be somewhat populated with vehicles. Uh but other than that, there was no other concerns.
So so the letters that you're seeing were uh prepared by um by the applicant, and those were uh sent to the surrounding landowners for uh signatures. Um but um the town still needs to advertise uh this for at least fourteen days to surrounding landowners uh for for comments.
But the general implication seems to be that uh there seems really no serious concerns from the surrounding properties.
I I think so, yes.
Okay, Counselor Peebles?
Uh I move that council give first reading to propose direct control one, commercial uh farmers market by law twenty twenty one zero six D as presented.
All right, so the motion has been made. Uh Counselor Dodds?
Uh yeah, I just want to add that that this is really exciting. It's nice to see that there'll be a permanent location, I think, in the community for the farmers market. And like I said, it's been a a long um long time coming, and I think, you know, dri- driving by and seeing that they've painted it red. I think it looks fantastic. And I think, you know, just kind of going out and talking to the community, they're excited to have this permanent location and to be able to go there and everything. And um so, yeah, I just um good luck to them and welcome them to having a permanent location, and I'm just excited to uh to uh to be going to the new location as soon as they can get up and running.
Sorry, do you have a a comment? Um, yeah, I guess, yeah, we've had people in the past speak, so I mean, certainly come up to the podium if you wish. If assuming council has no objections to it. Good morning.
Okay, sorry. I'm the market manager and the administrative assistant for the Drayton Valley and District Agricultural Society. I just want to thank the council and the administration for all the time and effort they've put into trying to find a solution for this. Um I uh this is the first that I've seen that it would still be kind of a flex zoning for the direct control and the commercial general, and that was one of the concerns that the agricultural society had, is that the agricultural society is the ones that actually own the building and that they meet the use, permitted use of the C gen zoning. Um and then when we went in to discuss, how do we use the the building for the multiple uses that may it may need to be used for? Um and the town suggested that a direct control might be the best way for the farmers market to fit that activity of the Egg Society into this district. Um uh the one thing that um Harvey asked me to bring forward is that um in the in the that C gen district and the direct control, um the building is small, and if we're going to maximize the building uh for use for vendors in the off season, that we would need some storage. And so he asked me to make sure that you realize that there is a C can that is behind the building currently, and the Egg Society has a second C can that they would like to also put at the site, again, behind the building. Um and they would make sure that it's painted and maintained, and it's just for storage use. It's a temporary, it's a temporary fixture. It's not um uh a permanent fix. If the Egg Society uh wants to build onto the site or do something permanent, they would go through the proper procedures and develop development permits and whatnot. But they did ask me to bring that for con- consideration that we needed more storage at the site for for what our uses are going to be. And I'm not sure if it's in there or not, so I haven't seen it. And just the um the hours of use for the farmers market currently, um we're planning to do farmers market continue on the Wednesdays. Um we have special events Saturdays, and our fall schedule has not yet been set because we do plan to work with our um our neighbors when we move the market in the fall. Our our tentative date, just so you know, is October first, that we would like to start markets at the building, so it gives you an idea of our timeline, because I knew that's that was a question. Uh we would like to start markets at the new location for October first, if at all possible. And um we're looking at probably flexing our vendors, so it would be twelve to fifteen a week, and we would rotate vendors on a weekly basis to allow them to all have access on a monthly basis. Some may be every week as a permanent vendor, but we're going to be rotating vendors through to accommodate the size and the location and try to reduce the impact to the surrounding businesses. So if you have any other questions um regarding the bylaw or uh want to know more about the farmers market and our plans moving forward at the location, we are very cognizant of public safety, and we have gone through all of the regulations and the training and everything needed to ensure public safety. So for for our events, and we've been doing this for forty five years. We're pretty, we're pretty sound on what we know. So thank you for your time. Thank you for listening. Um our concern is we just want the flexibility to be able to run our markets. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
If you have any questions, I'll I'll answer them to the best of my ability.
And just to add, sorry, Mr. Mayor, uh just to add to uh Colleen's uh uh sentiments there, uh so we 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 did add um a maximum of two shipping containers uh within um uh this land use district, so that has been uh accommodated as well as um uh we've provided ample flexibility. We know the farmers market is pretty fluid, right? So we've pro- provided ample flexibility in um uh the days and hours of operation.
If I may also, Mr. Mayor, add that um Colleen had mentioned October first for the start. So we'll um quickly get the advertisement out so we can meet the requirement for the two weeks of minimum advertising so that we, September fifteenth, we can come with second and third reading, just so that it's approved ahead of time of the October first, because otherwise, we don't meet until October sixth.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, so the motion is the council give first reading to propose direct control one, commercial farmers market by law twenty twenty one dash six dash D as presented. All in favor? That is carried. Um we'll take a quick break. Five minutes. After a nine-minute break, 6.4 whistleblower policy A-02-21. Mr. Streason?
My microphone was not on. I'm so sorry. And it is being presented for council review and consideration.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for administration? Is there a counsel that like to make a motion on this? Oh, Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. I'd like move that town council approve whistleblower policy A-02-21 as presented.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Any comments, questions, or debates? Counselor Peebles?
Can we just, in layman's terms, explain what this policy means? This isn't in any means a way for people to just bypass the CAO and go complain to council, correct? Like this is, there's some, there's some clear-cut things within this policy. I know this has been something Bill's been quite passionate about, but even in layman's terms, just kind of lay out what this policy means.
In short, administration has a number of procedures, no differently than our council has a code of conduct by which it follows. We have other policies and procedures in place for administration, but a lot of those are tending to be from the employer down to the employee or manager down to their individual employees. If an employee has an item that they feel needs to be addressed, and it happens to be against their employer, their supervisor, this is an opportunity for that person to report that incident, report that matter, issue, concern, and again, acting in good faith, not be subject to retaliation. So the processes are different for an employee with a supervisor or complain against a supervisor. It would be no different than if an employee had an issue with council. So this whistleblower policy just simply addresses the ability for an individual to report on a matter.
Mr. Mayor, just following that question, what would we have done in the past?
There has always been, Counselor McGee, a process for individuals to come forward, but there is an opportunity for it to be stopped in the process and not go through, for instance, whether it's because of a supervisor not allowing the process to be heard, or a supervisor retaliating in some form with their employee. The protection is not totally there. So this provides that opportunity for the protection of the employee.
Any, any other comment?
Just want to, in regards to Counselor McGee, is that, I think it gives the employee more options if they have a concern, that they have other directions to go than just due to their supervisor or even perhaps to the CAO. If they have a concern, they have other avenues.
All right. So the motion is that council approve the whistleblower policy A-2-21 as presented. Is nothing else? All in favor? That is carried. We are on to 6.5, the Omniplex ice fees. Mr. Streason?
As Mr. Starnes makes his way down, just to highlight that the entire process with the Omniplex ice fees follows the cost sharing agreement discussion with Brazos County and town councils' efforts to try to recover some of the necessary funds that we lost in the decision by Brazos County to reduce its recreation cost-sharing allotment. With this, town council has directed administration to look at an increase in the fees and how that could be then recovered by the town residents. So the information has been discussed at numerous council meetings, GMP meetings, Recreation Committee meetings. From the last meeting, it had been tabled simply because of the council wanting and directing administration to make sure that we had the exact wording to make it clear to the public, to our administration, and to the residents between Brazos County and the town of Drayton Valley as to how this would be implemented. So from there, I'll allow Mr. Starnes to just highlight the options of the motions that are being presented.
Thank you, Ms. Streason. So we had, we have four options, three of which were introduced or went through last week, and we added the one Counselor Dodds had suggested. So the first, I guess, motion would be to approve a fee rebate of 25% for all youth and adult group bookings for the 21-22 season, based on final registration numbers and end-of-year revenues to all town residents, based on the following terms and conditions. They must prove, provide proof of town residency, provide proof of the payment made to the group, and they must do it between the end of the season and no later than December 31st of next year. The second option, and the second option came about with minor hockey deciding that they didn't want to administer and do anything with this. So we took it upon ourselves to come up with a second option, that town council approve a rebate to all town residents of the Omniplex user groups excluding the Drayton Valley Junior A hockey team. And that would be equal to the respective group's registration fee increase from the 2020-21 to 21-22 season, not to exceed the 25% rebate calculation. So that basically says that if a group raises their fees a certain number, that we will cover the cost of that increase, but no greater than the 25% rebate would cover. So if they raise it $300, we're not going to give back the town residents $300 just to cover that cost. The third option, which came up last week, is to approve a fee rebate of 25% to all Omniplex youth and adult groups for the 21-22 season, based on the final registration numbers and end-of-year revenues. And so that would be basically just, we just give them, the groups back 25%, and then they do with it as they please. And then the fourth option, provide no rebate at all to anyone.
Okay. All right. So, I mean, I don't know, first things first, but we do have a tabled motion that we need to take from the table. So perhaps we want to deal with that first, I'm guessing? Yes? Okay. So does anyone want to make the motion that count, motion that's presented there, that council take from the table, Resolution 134-21?
Sure, I can make that motion. I'd like to make a motion that council take from the table, Resolution 131, 134-21.
All in favor? That is carried. So the motion we now have in front of us is that Counselor Kamana move that council approve up to 25% rebate to town of Drayton Valley residents. I think the intention is certainly there, but I don't know if we want to vote this one down and then maybe take a look at one of the other ones. Counselor Kamana?
Yeah, just from my understanding, you know, that motion and motion, the potential motion number one, I believe, you know, pretty similar in my mind. If there's some additions, the one, two, three, the options are there, but it seems like it's kind of the, the intention is pretty similar on both of them, in my opinion.
Okay. All right. So I guess we'll vote on this, and if we vote against it, then we'll be able to bring another motion, or we can vote in favor of it and just have the wording as is. So is there any comments, questions, or debate on this one before I ask? Are you voting? Counselor Wheeler?
Yeah, I think it'd be a little bit cleaner if we just go with a new motion with all the description in it. The intention might be the same, but I think for everyone's sake, especially if we have people that are on different, differing opinions of which motion should be coming forward, then I think we need to be more specific, so.
All right. Okay. So the motion of 134-21, all in favor? All opposed? Bill, are you voting? Okay. All right. So that was defeated. So now we can have the opportunity to create a new motion. Well, before I go into that, I'll just ask if there's any questions for administration before we make a motion. So I will open up the floor for questions. Administration? Counselor Peebles?
Okay. Under, so under this proposed one, 25% reduction, you have somebody, say, from minor hockey, or figure skating, or somebody's in men's rec, all right? So they find out, hey, if I'm from the town, I can bring my ID. They'll check it. They see that I'm registered, and they're going to issue me a check and send it to my house. Is that what it is? We're going to keep it, like, clean and easy? Or what is, what does that look like?
Thank you, Counselor. In all instances, that procedure still remains the same. So between motion, the option of either potential Resolution Three, potential Resolution Four, it would still be on the basis of individuals would have to come to town, prove their residency, show that they did register, so show proof of registration in the program, whether it's minor hockey, figure skating, men's rec, ringette, any of those, and we would then administer. So again, administration can try to go through an example to show how it would differ between Resolution, potential Resolution Three, and potential Resolution Four, if council still wants us to do that.
Okay. Do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, thank you. So just hypothetically, September 1st is community registration night, right? So could it be a thing where they can go sign up, say, oh, you're from the town? Go over to the Omniplex desk and get your thing rebated? Or do they have to drive over to the town office to have that issued? Like, how, logistically, what does this look like?
Because the entire program, the rebate program, is based on knowing and calculating the number of hours, the revenue received, and the number of town residents within each of the programs. It cannot be administered until the end of the season. So they will have to pay and knowing that they will get the rebate at the end of the season. Because minor hockey, the value, so in terms of the example that you see within this package, is only an example based on the last three years. So Derek and his staff will have to go through those calculations for each of the groups at the end of the year. Now, that's not an exorbitant task for him to do so, because it just means all he needs is what's the total revenue? How many kids came from town in figure skating? How many kids came from town in minor hockey? How many adult men and ladies came from the recreational league, hockey league? But it can only be determined at the end of the year.
Counselor Kamana?
Thank you. Just trying to understand the third and fourth, or the first and second option in layman's terms. To, so if a season is $200, and then we, you know, the increase is 100, and it goes to 300, on the first option, 300 is, 25% is calculated from 300, but on the second option, it's calculated on the 100? Is that the difference?
Thank you, Counselor. It's not really calculated that way. So I'm going to put this out as an example, for the difference between the two resolutions. The first resolution, when we say rebate of 25, and it goes straight out to everyone, in terms of the town residents. If in minor hockey, it turns out that the rebate that each town resident is eligible, let's say, is $115, they may pay $400 to that. That doesn't matter. We would then provide a rebate of $110 to each town resident. That's in Resolution One. Okay? But we would never exceed, in any of these cases, we would never exceed 25% rebate in any of these situations. Okay? In Resolution number, the potential of the second resolution, number four, is that we would only provide it to the maximum of what their difference was between what they had for a registration fee the previous to what it is for this year.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there someone confident enough to make a motion? Confident enough? So. We have two. You have a question?
No, I'd just like to get what the administration's preference may be.
Thank you, Counselor. We are prepared, and we have made a recommendation in the package. We are looking at town council approving a fee rebate of 25% for the bookings for 2021-22 season, based on final registration numbers to all town residents, based on terms and conditions outlined. And again, must prove residency, must prove proof of payment, and they are to make the application directly to the town.
All right. So, Counselor Peebles?
Sorry, it's my last hypothetical. So I went back to school shopping with my kids this week. So we go to Old Navy, and then they give you some thingy that says, if you come back between this and this day, then you save $20. And so I'm like, okay, that's great. But then I forget about it, and I never get it. And then by the time, next time I go, I'm like, oh, yeah, I forgot to go collect that thingy. Like, I think for this year, we're kind of sending a message that, hey, Drayton Valley, we care about your recreation. We have to make some really difficult decisions to look after you, and we hate to do this to our neighbors in the county, but it's necessary to try to cover some of the bills. It would be nice if we could figure out a way that if they were to pay it, that they could be rebated at the beginning, not on the backside. Right? And I know we're saying based on attendance, and then trying to break it down, but if the rate's the rate, if there is a way, that would be, that would be an ideal situation.
Yes. Counselor Wheeler?
I can present the solution. We rebate the group. If you rebate the group, it would be exactly that, because it would be done right at the very beginning. They'd get their registration numbers. They already know, like, minor hockey is going to pay, cost $400. They've already set their rates, because they know what they, they need to cover their ice fees, their club time, they hang out, they have jerseys. All their fees are in their registration fee, and they have a breakdown and a lineup that says ice rental, and how much that is. And so by us setting the rebate amount, they'd already know what that rebate would actually be, 25% versus town versus county people, and very easily could have, if you're from, if you're a membership with the town, it costs this much. If you're in the county, it costs this much, and then they could do it upfront. And then they wouldn't have to issue a rebate. There would be no program. No one would have to, other than at the Omniplex, when it comes to the actual end-of-the-month bill. We submit a bill, you skated for 10 hours, you owe us $1,000. If half of those people are from the town, 25% would come off half of that. It's, and it would be done upfront, and no one would have to do any of the calculations or worry about it, or residents wouldn't have to apply for rebates. It'd all be done.
So, Counselor Kamana, do you have a question, or are you going to make a motion?
I'm just going to make a motion.
Okay. Well, this, Nancy, did you have a question? Okay, well, this, uh, and Nancy, did you have a question?
Yeah, so my, and I, I wish it was that clean cut, but the problem is, is a lot of our community groups feel the same way as we do. In the fact that, you know, this is a community center, it doesn't matter if you're, if you drove three minutes to get here or seven minutes to get here. And uh, like, so even some of the groups that we talked to, they said, well, they're not actually going to reflect that onto the people that we intend to. They're just gonna absorb it into the group. So, and that was the only concern, is that we actually wanted to make sure that the funds that we are creating, this subsidy program, actually get to them. So is the only way we can actually do that to do it as like a Old Navy, here's your rebate, don't forget to pick up your check on the other end? Or do we just, would we already know who the people are, so at the end, we just mail them a check? Right? Rather than having to provide proof? Would we already have that info?
We can make the discussions after making the motion.
Yeah. So do you actually have a question for administration?
Yes, I do. So I've, um, I, I agree with what Farrell said. So when I look at, um, let's say, motion number five, right? And it says, based on final registration numbers and end of year revenues. So is that meaning we'd have to wait till the end of the year to issue that? Or we could do it just like as Farrell's saying, that at the beginning, they register and we do it at the beginning?
The, uh, thank you, Counselor, and I, I appreciate the questions and the, and also the attitude about, you know, how can we get this rebate back right away? Um, short of administration going through a significant amount of work. Um, what happens during the course of a year is that we can, come September second, when Derek sits with his user groups, establish what the user group are setting for their season. The difficulty comes with either cancellations or extra bookings. So while we might be able to determine the um, anticipated revenues for each of the groups for this season and work it off of that, we would still be left with all the different changes during the course of the year because of either tournaments coming on, because of extra practices, extra games, or cancellations due because of a number of different things. So we would still have to do the calculation at the end of the season to make all of those adjustments. So we're doing it twice. I know this has been difficult in terms of the political statement that wants to be made, the administrative capacity to try to say, how do we do this? Um, this has been a taxing exercise in terms of trying to come up with the best way on how to move this forward. There are two objectives that, uh, administration is trying to meet. One was the objective that council set out at the beginning of this discussion. The second is making sure that we are in a place to administer the program, because the sports groups themselves have said they don't want to administer the program. If the town council is implementing this program, then town council and its administration should be administering the program. So there has been a great deal of difficulty in trying to find, how do we make this as seamless as possible but while still trying to meet those two objectives? Um, I appreciate Counselor Wheeler's comments with respect to the group. Um, it still does not hit on one of those objectives in terms of what council had directed to administration.
Counselor Gomana?
Finally, thank you. Um, yeah, in my mind, um, you know, more than a political statement, this is about, um, you know, uh, as I mentioned on the GNP, uh, making sure or being fair that, um, the community pays for the, the services that, uh, they use. Um, we, in, in a way, um, the community was paying, uh, through taxation as well as user fees, uh, before. But when county pulled the funding, uh, the amount, uh, that was paid through taxation for the county residents went down. Hence, we are proposing this change to the user fees, so, you know, that we can capture that through the user fees. Um, and the, the solution that we can present is that, um, we can capture that through, through the user fees and then give a rebate to, uh, our residents, because they are still paying the same amount through taxation uh, for these, uh, services and these, uh, facilities to, to be run. Hence, I'm gonna make the motion and we can have the discussion after, uh, whether this is the right, uh, motion or not and right approach or not. Um, I would like to make a motion that town council approves a fee rebate of 25% for youth and adult group booking for the 2021-22 season based on final registration numbers and end of year revenues to all town residents based on the terms and conditions outlined below. Ice users must provide proof of town residency. Ice users must provide proof of payment made to a group program. Participants must make application directly to the town at the end of season and no later than December 31st, 2022. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion has been made. Um, and it is potential motion number three, which is on page of two twenty-five of your agenda, just if anyone missed that. So any comments, questions or debate? Do you have?
I do, Farrell. Oh, sorry.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes, um, I know that you've said that making sure that the residents get their, their 25% rebate is very important to you. This is for Counselor Gomana, but, um, with this rebate, there's one line for figure skating, right? If you're in figure skating, you get the rebate of whatever it was, $85, doesn't matter. Um, but if I sign up my daughter, she's only in level two, so she's only there for two days a week, so my fee is $300 and I'll get the $85 rebate. But your child is a higher level and skates for five days a week and you have to pay $600 for her to be in the club, you only get the $85 rebate as well. So you're not getting your 25% and I might be getting more than my 25%. And I'd like to know as the resident, how that's fair?
Yeah, you know, a-again, how we administrate, right? You know, there, there will be some concerns that we have to address going forward, right? So this is the first time that we are trying to implement this. And if, if adjustments needed, of course, uh, admission can bring it back to the council and, and do those changes. But if we don't start somewhere, uh, we won't be able to figure this out. So that's why, um, I'm proposing that we'll start somewhere and then if there's any changes that needed, I'm pretty sure that administration will bring it back to the council and we can adjust accordingly.
So Counselor Wheeler, you're saying that the motion after that, number four, would capture your concerns? Or you, just to your question that you asked, are any of these motions relevant to, to address your concern? And Ms. Dreesen, you can go ahead.
I'm sorry, don't mean to interrupt, but I'm, I'm just reading the, the motion that Counselor Gomana read out. And there is even the allowance for this motion to actually, within each group, accommodate uh, the changes within each group. So for that particular instance, we could go to each of the individual groups and ask if there's a way to make sure that it can be fair. And just by reading this resolution again, it doesn't restrict us from doing that.
Okay. Counselor Dodds?
Yeah, so this has been, um, very confusing and long and thank you, administration, for all your patience and, and work on this. Um, yeah, it, it's difficult for me because, I mean, I see that, you know, we were put in a hard position by, um, the county, you know, backing out, um, about the last minute and, and of course, we're in arbitration right now. And I would have liked to have seen, I think, the, the process of arbitration go through before we made a decision on this. I feel like we rushed it a little bit and I do feel like it is a bit of a, um, political pissing match, if I can say. Um, and, and I do worry because then it does fall on the users, whether you're town, whether you're county, whether, whether you're whatever. And I don't think there is really a right or a wrong. I feel that, um, and I appreciate all the work that the rec committee has done. I do feel that maybe that their opinions differ. So then for me, it, you know, when I think that the first, um, proposal that came for the, for the increase, and I do understand that there should be an increase to fees, but then now when this second one comes, I find that there could be a differ in that contradiction with the first one. So for me, I'm, I'm in greens that I'd like to see that rebate, um, go to the, to the, go to the group itself as well. So, um, yeah, um, so just to say that it's not that I'm not in favor of the motion, it's just I'm not in favor of, I guess, everything that goes with the motion. And I do appreciate everything that administration's done. You're trying to listen to council and it might not be very clear and we might be a little bit divided and, and, um, and yeah, I don't know if we'll eventually get there, but hopefully we will and it might, um, not come out till arbitration.
That sounded very political. It's round and round. Um, so my dream job, I'm an accountant, but I'm not. I don't have the talents to do that, so I'm going to trust our accounting team. Um, I do have a question for administration. So is it impossible from an accounting perspective to offer a rebate, like, earlier on, kind of to what Counselor Peebles was suggesting? Like, is it? Like, so we register and we get some money back and it's kind of in, like, we might not be bang on 100%, right? But we kind of have a target, we kind of got close. I, I'm just thinking from an accounting perspective, if it's, um, because I, I do get the concern that yeah, we're, how many people are actually going to avail of this? Because most people will forget. Uh, I just want to try to make it as easy as possible. If not, it's fine, but, um, it is, is there a way that we can do it?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if, if we take, uh, average of last three years or something and then do it that way, maybe, right? But if not, for that exact year, probably not in my opinion.
Thank you, counsel.
I just want to throw it out there.
No, I, I appreciate it and, and trust me, it is a concern. And, uh, we have also talked about, you know, it's a full, you know, five, six months before they had that opportunity to, to get refunds back. If, if, if things were in a perfect world where, let's take a look at figure skating and they assessed the exact 28% to their fee increase, then it might be easy enough to do. But again, it's these adjustments that happen during the course of the year that if we want to be very fair about who gets the 25%, it means that we're still having to do that adjustment. Now, if council wants us to proceed with the initial right away, there is a way based on, like we said, after September second, once we know exactly their schedule for the year, we could then implement that first initial rebate. And, but then the adjustments would have to come at the end of the year. And I'm throwing this and, and saying, looking to my administration because it means extra work, but it is the only way that we can make it as fair as possible.
Counselor Peebles?
So just as an example, so looking at, uh, minor hockey in here, uh, rebate pot, 101 participants, $115.12 a person. Well, what if we had like a $100 rebate upfront in that case, right? So you still have some money to play with and then at the end, if there was extra, they could have a check on the backend. Like, is there a way to kind of do it that way? So they're getting a true taste of it?
Um, I, I think so, Counselor Peebles. I think that we can make the system work so that there is some initial rebate at the very beginning. Um, but it will have to wait until after administration has some time to sort through what that overall yearly revenue would be. We would still need to have the information of how many residents from the town are in each of those organizations. Never mind the fact that you might have town residents either leaving or entering into the program during the course of the year. Um, but in the, I guess, in the fairness of saying, if, if they can't afford that 25% increase right away, but if they knew they were getting it back within a matter of a month, well, they might be able to make that, that, uh, payment go through. So Derek and Alavera, can we? Possible?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah. So to that, uh, to Counselor Gomana's motion, does there, is there flexibility within that motion for you guys to do something of that nature if we decided, or is this?
Thank you, Counselor Peebles. Just with respect then to the resolution, um, if there's a need to change anything within the resolution, it would just simply be based on final registration, based on regist, I would just simply say, based on, uh, initial or on registration numbers, because then it could be initial, it could be final. So just based on registration numbers and annual revenues.
Counselor Commander, would you take that as a friendly amendment?
My, my concern with that is, um, how much of a administrative work would that be, you know, doing that that way?
Thank you, Counselor. It just means that we're going through the process of what we had determined at the end of the season. We would be doing the same thing in September. So we would be doing one of this in September and one of this in, at the end of the year.
Get that, but how much of a burden to the administration?
Thank you, uh, Counselor Gomana. Um, we had mentioned in the previous meetings that the end of the year, um, that there would be some, but the administrative side, uh, we had said that we can accommodate that. As far as the checks going out, um, we determine that, so for instance, in minor hockey, 240 registrations, we're seeing right now, 60% of that is coming from the county. So we're looking at, uh, you know, 110, uh, checks that might go out. And, um, as I said, during COVID, we refunds, we had to do a lot of refunds at that time, so it's doable.
Thank you. So are you proposing a friendly amendment? Okay, yeah, I'll accept that friendly amendment.
Sorry, what was the exact friendly amendment? Yeah, no, what's the?
The resolution would read, the town council approve a fee rebate of 25% for youth and adult group bookings for the 2021-22 season based on registration numbers and annual revenues to all town residents based on the terms and conditions outlined below. And those three conditions, as they are.
That, that's the one. Yeah, that's what you accept, or?
Yes, I will.
Counselor Wheeler, did you have something you want to say? Go ahead.
Just a, a question, um, for administration. In terms of the actual ice fees coming in, do you invoice the user groups monthly? So every month, you have an exact count of their ice time, what they've spent and what they owe? Yes, and would know exactly who's from town and county every month? Yeah. Yeah, which makes sense, one-time count for sure.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I did miss out on three in that resolution, uh, where it says participant must make application directly to the town. If, uh, the friendly amendment could also include the exclusion of the words "at the end of the season" and so it just read directly to town, no later than December 31st, 2022. My, my apologies.
Okay. All right. So are we ready? Counselor McGee?
Um, just, um, oh, this is all just minor hockey. It, it doesn't really express it in there, or, or is it all recreation? Swimming, every, everything is in there, right?
Sorry, this is for the Omniplex only. This is for the ice, uh, schedule. So this would include all of the user groups with the exception of Thunder, because we've negotiated a contract with Thunder.
Do, do we need, do we need to say that? That it's only Omniplex, not swimming, it's not baseball, it's not any of those things? And, and, because it can, it can come out, because in my mind, I went to the, to the headline and the headline, it says, Town of Drayton Valley, as my motion, uh, decided to rebate all town residents and a rebate of 20%, 25% on the recreation fees. This is being done to address the shortfall of funding by the county. So there's the headline, but it, it, it's only about the Omniplex.
Thank you, Counselor McGee. Sometimes administration is far too close to these resolutions and the whole objective. Um, and if Counselor Gomana wants to, uh, uh, include yet another friendly amendment, then perhaps it should read 2021-22 Omniplex Ice Season.
Duly accepted.
Okay. So that friendly amendment was accepted? All right. So does the recording secretary have the motion that she needs? Yep. If not, we'll get it by the end. All right. So, um, any other comments, questions, debate on this? If this gets voted down, I All right. So we have a motion. I'm not going to read it out because it's just, I have some scribbles on my paper and I'd probably screw it up anyway. So the motion that
some scribbles on my paper and I'd probably screw it up anyway. So the motion that has been friendly accepted twice now for generally giving the town residents a 25% rebate, all in favor? All opposed. That motion is carried. Unfortunately, I need to step out for like 10 minutes. Councillor McGee? You got a chair for like 10 minutes. I just got to go run and grab something. So, sorry to put you on the spot like that. I might even be back before we... Hammer this through now. Come on.
All right, we've handled the, the omni-plex fees. The 6.6 is the new aquatic center amenity sponsorship rights agreement for the approval. There's a couple there that you'll speak to, Ms. Resin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The Town of Drayton Valley has been working with the Community Aquatic Facility Committee, who has been, that committee has been very active. And a number of contributions are coming to the town to help out with the construction of our new aquatic facility. We have, of course, implemented a sponsorship campaign. And with that, we've received two more sponsorships to be presented for approval. One is through Obsidian Energy signing the agreement to be the naming sponsor of the Naterium viewing deck. That is for a sponsorship of $100,000 and they're paying it over three years instead of five years. So very appreciative of that. And Plains Western Canada ULC, again, signing an agreement in hopes of being awarded the naming sponsorship of the new aquatic facility storage room. So those two sponsorship applications and agreement drafts are in front of council for review and decision.
Thank you. Are there any questions from administration? Anybody ready to make the motion? Someone can. Councillor Wheeler, thank you.
I move that council approve the sponsorship rights agreement between the town and Obsidian Energy Limited as presented.
Thank you, councillor Wheeler. Any questions now the motion's on the floor? The only question that arises for me is, so individually, we have Plains Midstream putting down $10,000 for a, to name a, just the, the room. And so is there a list that, say, an individual could say, well, you know, $10,000, I'm in. Is that, is that out there somewhere? I'm sure it is. I just want to know where it is.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. There is a list. The sponsorship brochure outlines all of the opportunities for sponsorship, either for a 10-year period, five-year or a five-year period. And then, of course, it also outlines, and there's a contribution form for just straight donations. So we accept donations in addition to the sponsorship naming rights. And we update that on, not on a daily basis, but we do update it and shows which ones have been sponsored and who by. So again, giving those organizations a little bit more publicity as well, too. And it outlines which ones and opportunities are still available. We are still, the big one is still open. The naming rights to the facility itself is still open. But we've had to be fairly creative because organizations have come forward. Very healthy response to the sponsorship package so far. And if there's, again, if somebody, an organization or a company or family sees an opportunity that might not be in our brochure and they'd like to discuss it with us, we are open to that discussion.
Thank you. Question on the motion? All in favor?
Do you want me to continue? The second motion?
The second motion, please.
Thank you. I move that council approve the sponsorship rights agreement between the town and Plains Midstream Canada ULC as presented.
Motion on the floor? All in favor?
Now he's got a taste of it. He might be, might be back throwing his name in the... All right. So I'm assuming that was 6.6. And did we have a resolution on 6.6? So we can move to 6.7? Okay. 6.7, community events grants third quarter allocation, late applicants.
Quarter with our deadline of July 3rd, we had a couple of applications come in, actually three eligible underneath the town administration. And then, of course, one was addressed by council. That event, which was organized through Elevated Experience Camping Society, had been awarded but did not proceed. So the funding was, of course, not, not allocated to Elevated Experience Camping Society. Since they, that deadline, we've had two late applications. One is with the Community Foundation, and that is for their community dinner coming up August 20th. I want to recognize that this would be a formal recognition of an email, I guess, approval by council to allocate $1,500 to the Drayton Valley Community Foundation. And the other is through the Drayton Valley Minor Baseball Association. And this is not uncommon that the town receives these types of requests because this is for the hosting of a ball provincials. And very often, these organizations will get a one or two week warning that, yes, they've been approved, or will they take on the hosting of a provincials? So that organization is looking to host August 27th to 29th. We have then of the amount, only $1,502.50 left, even though they have asked for $3,660. Council has the prerogative of looking at the remaining quarter of $5,000 if they so wish to extract from that allocation if they wish. But administration is not recommending anything, just letting council know of their prerogative.
Actually, yeah, I can also say that for the baseball, so the provincials were supposed to be held in Stettler, and Stettler pulled out last minute. So then they were trying to find a, a new venue, so. Yeah, I guess they checked Drayton Valley. Okay, all right. Any questions for administration? Is there someone that would like to make a motion for this? It's not all at the same time here.
Hold on. Thank you. I move that council recognize awarding the Drayton Valley Community Foundation $1,500 from the community events grant to help cover the costs for rental and food for the community dinner taking place on August 20th, 2021.
Sorry, you said $1,500?
Yes, I did.
You said it very quickly. My ears aren't that, aren't that good anymore. Okay. So the motion is for $1,500 for the Community Foundation dinner. Any comments, questions to debate on that one? All right, all in favor? And it's carried. Is there someone that would like to make a motion for the minor Oh. All right, councillor Dodds. Yeah.
Just his eyes move. I'd like to make a motion that council award the Drayton Valley Minor Baseball $1,502.50 from the community events grant to help cover the costs for purchasing provincial shirts and water Gatorade for the 13 new teams provincials, event taking place on August 27th to 29th, 2021.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Any comments, questions to debate? All in favor? That is carried. We'll move on to 6.8, Combative Sports Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town of Drayton Valley has, have had conversations with SBG Drayton Valley during some of the discussions with the Recreation Committee. And SBG has made a formal request to have the Town of Drayton Valley revise bylaw number 200307C in order to host a mixed martial arts event. The bylaw had been created back in 2003 to accommodate a boxing match that was hosted in Drayton Valley. It has not been updated since that time and no commission has been appointed. The steps necessary to update the bylaw include council approving amendments to the bylaw, council appointing individuals to the commission, the commission approving a promoter, and the commission approving a date and location. The commission would be responsible to supervise, regulate, govern, control all bouts and contests held in connection with the regulated sport, and would also be responsible for the provision of medical, police, referees, judges, officials, or supervisory personnel as deemed necessary. In order for us to follow through on our requirement following the GMP meeting of last week, administration is looking into not only the information and impact with respect to town's insurance, so by talking to our insurance provider and talking to legal counsel. In your additional material package has been the material that has been presented to us by legal counsel as well as by our insurance company. And we've had a little bit more investigative, investigative work into looking at the City of Calgary Commission as well. So the information is presented. We had the opportunity to speak with SBG last week during GMP. And again, a decision was made at that time just to allow the opportunity for council to reflect on the impact of the combative sports bylaw and the establishment of a committee. This is not to establish what the commission is at this point in time, but whether we would, whether council would be directing administration to either proceed or not proceed with the bylaw.
Any questions for administration? Let me get my paperwork. Councillor Dodds?
I just have a question. There were some, I guess, additional, additional things that were sent out. What, when did you send those out, Sabina? I think there was, oh,
That's correct. Yes, it's in that material as well. So there is a legal opinion. Yes, in that material. So again, a, as we expect from our legal counsel, council is looking at, or legal counsel is looking for ways of how we can mitigate risk. I know that in the end, though, and we've heard consistently from our insurance provider, from the City of Calgary, and as well as from our legal counselors, that the town would still be, if there were ever an issue, an incident that may hit, that may go to a lawsuit, we would still be named in that particular lawsuit.
Councillor Peebles?
So I would say that mixed martial arts as a whole, for a number of years, was viewed a lot as cage fighting, right? And initially it was. It was gnarly dudes, different sizes, no gloves, no, and just no rules. You look at some of the old ones, it's pretty gnarly. But over the last 25 years, it really has formed into a whole, well-rounded sport. When you look at it, it, it goes on all over the place. I know Penhold, they have their own commission as well, and, and they charge quite a hefty amount even just to use it. So it is a revenue generator for them as well, probably covering a lot of those bases. I don't know if there's been cases where municipalities of any size or shape have actually been charged. You look, there's fight commissions kind of going on all over the place. But the fact is, we have a local group that has a passion for MMA. We actually have a few different areas that train martial arts in our community. It seems there, there is a big following in this area. And an opportunity to have a big tourism play as well. I've, I've been to some of these events in Red Deer in different areas, and you'll have upwards of 600, 700 people watching. And so there, it's, it's, it's kind of, there's a tourism aspect to it. There, it is a sport. It's just, I guarantee within the next 20 years, it's going to be an Olympic sport. You watch, it's going to happen. And so, yeah, there, there probably is liabilities in some capacity, but I think a lot of people all over the place seem to get past that. But this, this would be cool to see, and it's being brought forward by a local group that is very passionate about this. I know back in the day, boxing had a huge following, and there was all sorts of matches that were happening right here locally. You see the old posters in the, in the boxing gym, and it's great. And we were very, we endorsed it very much, and the DuParens drove that thing very hard. And, and we had, we had a great success for a number of years that we're still kind of riding the wave of. Now we have another group that's local, and they're passionate, and there's other local groups that would likely get involved. I don't think it's going to be like Cobra Kai. I don't think they're going to be breaking into fights in the school. But it is a lot of discipline that comes with this sport as well. So just, just some insight from someone who missed that GMP. I will say, in 2017, there was a MMA fight in Edmonton. Tim Hague did pass away due to brain injuries, and the city of Edmonton is currently being sued by the family. That was kickboxing. So I don't know if that falls into the same thing. So, so there is a possibility of lawsuits. But councillor Dodds?
Thank you. So thank you, administration, for putting this all together and bringing this quickly. It's appreciated. So just when, I can understand, like, when it's coming from the lawyers and the insurance and things like that, the risk, the liabilities and everything like that. Can you just touch on how the risk and liability would be different, let's say, from even at our own splash park, or if we were to have a hockey tournament? Like, there's always a risk and liability with everything we do. So would it, I'm just looking at it, wouldn't it be the same if somebody slipped and fell at our splash park, or we had a, a hockey game and a fight broke out in the crowd and they wanted to sue the town? Would it not be the same type of thing?
Thank you, councillor Dodds. With, with all of these situations, it is an assessment of the risk. And the insurance company and legal counsel will always base it on what's the potential of the risk. And with every sport, I agree with councillor Peebles, every sport is trying to come up with safer guidelines for any of the sport, no different than we're always trying to come up with safety measures for what happens in our recreation facilities. The risk for this is no different than if you go through an insurance company and you have a sports car versus a two-ton grain truck. Your insurance is going to be higher for the sports car than it will be for the grain truck. I know this because my parents actually had me drive a grain truck. But... So this particular type of incident would, in the, in the insurance world, mean that there is higher risk because the potential of it happening is constant versus is there a potential for a fight to break out in the audience watching a hockey game? Because in combative sports, there is always physical contact already, so that's not necessarily always happening within an arena watching spectators. The insurance company, as far as the impact to the town, is that our insurer has already said, we're not in a position to insure the town. They would have to find another underwriter to provide us with the insurance. And the example I can give there is through the Thunder in the Valley event. There is only one insurance company in all of North America that would insure the drag racing that occurred because the risk was just so high. So that's the information I can give you in terms of what is being presented and what's the difference between that. Is that...
All right. If there's no other questions for administration, is there someone that would like to make a motion? Councillor Peebles?
I move that council direct administration to revise the Town of Drayton Valley Combative Sports Commission bylaw 200307C for council's review and to prepare the required information for the formation of a commission.
Okay. Councillor McGee?
The only question I have is about timing again. This group wants to do something before the end of this year, or is it next year that they're planning? And so we've got, we've got a 14-day thing and all of that.
Thank you, councillor McGee. Yes, in terms of the process and the timeline, I spoke with, with the, with SBG Brad just last week, and he knows that there is some time that's required in order for the advertisement for... in order for the advertisement for this to proceed. They were targeting October 1st. They know that if this council proceeds with the commission that we need the necessary time, not only to advertise, but also to appoint individuals and to do the administrative work that we need to do, plus also find the insurance. So he knows that he's not going to get the October 1st timeline, unless, of course, he is in a position to negotiate with Penhold Commission.
Okay. We've got Councilor Yamana, and then Councilor Ballas?
Thank you. So just from my understanding about the insurance piece and legalities and all that. So this motion is just to explore all of that and then bring back to the council, I believe, because I would like to know, you know, how much of insurance that we are looking at, and I know how are we recouping that, are we passing it to this group, or how, you know, how that semantics will work?
Thank you, Councilor. Yeah, this has been quite the learning curve in terms of what, what a commission actually does. We know that we're looking upwards of 5,000-plus for the insurance, to get insurance coverage. So that means that, pardon? Per event. Yes, per event. So we would, as, if we are setting up a commission, means that we have to put that onto the budget for the event. So meaning that we would have to recoup those costs through the event. So that's the, that is the answer to the insurance. The other one had to deal with, your other question was what? Oh, as far as the resolution, but not only legal, but also in terms of the resolution. So this resolution does not mean that we're approving a new bylaw. This resolution is, would be then directing administration to set up the bylaw because we would have to go back to legal counsel because there are versions that we would want to make sure legal counsel understands. And they've commented that they would see changes to the bylaw. And then it would come back to council to say whether they agree with the revisions to the bylaw. That bylaw then establishes a commission, but we would have to talk with the community about who then actually sits on the commission, what their responsibilities would be, and getting all the material together on how that would run.
Okay. Councilor Ballas?
Thank you. I think we have to thread very carefully on this bylaw. And before, I would certainly support any type of a commission. I would really need clarity on liability. And I know there's some protection under to the MGA. Whether that's going to protect all commission members or just councillors, or I'm not really clear on that. I would really need to know that we're not putting the town at risk in any form to do this. It's not a popular thing to have, especially if we're looking at a traveling commission. So I, I really think that we really got to explore and get more information, especially in regards to liability and what everybody's responsibilities and duties would be.
Yeah, I think the purpose of this motion would be that council direct administration to get those answers. That's my understanding. It's like, we're not really agreeing to anything. We're just saying, figure out what it looks like. Well, that's just from my understanding. Councilor Peebles?
And there's a lot to it. Like, there, there is a ton of stuff that's going to come back. So there's waivers that are signed. If you're an amateur, you fight with different equipment than a pro would, right? You'd have some of the head coverings and stuff. The, the refs have to truly know the sport, ins and outs and how they go about it. They have to have ambulance on, on scene. They have to make sure the weight cut was done properly. If they weren't, a doctor is right there to address it. So over the years, this has really formed into a thing where fighters are truly protected within, within what they're going for, so.
And I appreciate what you're saying. And that becomes the responsibility of the commission, and I know some promoters want to take that responsibility. And that's why that commission has to have very qualified people on the commission that understand what their duties are.
I agree. Ms. Treason?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to just clarify what the resolution is speaking to, is that with approval of this resolution, administration would be going through the exercise of revising the bylaw and preparing the information for the commission, rather than gathering information. Because the gathering of the information, we've already gathered the insurance information, and we've gathered the legal opinion. If it's unclear, then this, and you're asking administration to do further work on the legal and insurance aspects, then this resolution is a little different.
Councilor Wheeler?
Thank you. So I would agree with what you just said. I think we're at the point where this is the basics of it. Either we're deciding, yeah, we're going to move forward with this, and we need to make that decision, or we're not, and we need to make that decision. I'm in supportive of it. I think there are always risks in everything that we do, and I agree with Cory. I think it's formed into its own real sport, and it is very controlled. And I think the most cautious point for me is really making sure we appoint the right people to the commission, which I have concerns about with the bylaw. When it says from the Drayton Valley area, that's way too undescriptive. And I also would like the right to reserve. If there's someone in Laduke who's an expert, that we would be able to appoint them to the commission. Who cares if they have to drive 100 kilometers? So I think we need to be more specific on that term. But for me, I'm supportive at this point of one, and seeing how it goes, and of course, the fees being passed on to the, to the sports event to cover, then I would move forward with this.
Okay. Did we make a motion on this? Okay. I got, uh... Councilor Dodds?
Sorry, I'm just trying to find it again. I was jumping all over here. So with that being said, just with what you're saying, Farrell, is there's, there's some changes to the bylaw. So would there be time for additional changes to the bylaw coming, when it came, I guess, for first reading? There would be? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Okay, I guess, so the motion is that council direct administration to revise the Town of Drayton Combative Sports Commission bylaw 2003-7-C for council's review and to repair the required information for the formation of a commission. That is the motion. All in favor? That is carried. All right. 6.9. Education Budget and Reserve.
We ready? Okay. The Education Committee, through a number of discussions, seeking consideration, approval of town council on two matters. One is for the establishment of an education reserve. This is to recognize that for any funds earned, such as through donations or fundraisers, that it be held into an education reserve dedicated to zero-fee tuition. The second is for budget reallocation. The Education Committee recognizing that it will not be using the full allocation of funds in the zero-fee tuition amount of $150,000, and in order to get some of the rooms ready for some of the programs that they're requesting, just, just a reallocation. It's not extra funds, it's just reallocating funds from one code to another to allow those improvements to be made at the CETC. So those two items have been brought forward. We had a discussion at GMP last week with respect to an explanation on these items. If there are any questions, administration is here to answer, as well as our Education Committee members.
Okay. Questions? Councilor Wheeler?
Thank you. This question is more for Elvira. I just want to make sure that we say to accumulate any revenues earned, that earned is specifically defined enough for you because we said that that would just be through donations or fundraising. That's good? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Is there someone that'd like to make a motion? Councilor Dodds?
I'd like to make a motion that council direct administration to establish a reserve for education to accumulate any reserves earned, and that council approve the reallocation of $40,000 from the operating budget to purchase classroom equipment and supplies.
Okay. Any comments, questions, or debate on that? All right. So, yeah, it's not the establishment of any new funds. It's just kind of moving things about and making sure the reserve is there for the donations that we do have coming in, which I think is reasonable for anyone that wants to donate money to it. So if there's nothing else, I will ask a question. All in favor? That is carried. 610. Town of Drayton Valley Recycling Center relocation. Good morning again. So this is a RFD for the hopeful relocation of the recycling center. So I know I did speak about it a couple times before. So the information on this piece will be relatively the same. I ready to answer any questions that council may have. Okay, so this is the first I'm hearing about it, anyway. I've missed some meetings. I do apologize. Where exactly is this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So essentially, the recycling center, we all know where it currently is, and the site map, which is an attachment, is where administration would recommend moving it. So I forgot, yeah, there weren't three here last time, so I guess some of you are, yeah. I can, I can quickly go through it here.
Councilor Wheeler has pointed out this is the landfill, and now that I see that, it makes very obvious sense that it is indeed the landfill. I was just like, looking at the buildings, I'm like, where do we have buildings? That looks fat. But I apologize.
Okay. If, if you wish, I can reread it for you guys.
Nope. Looks good. Any questions for administration? Councilor McGee?
Has there been any feedback? Thank you, Councilor McGee. Nothing that we've heard of yet. But like I said, on the bottom there, communications will be quite heavily, just so that everybody's in the know and it avoids any confusion of a possible transition.
Just, sorry, looking at this picture. So it will be behind a locked gate, will it not, when the landfill is not open? Or what's the?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, that's the, that's the fence.
Yeah. The current fencing will still be in place along with the old gate, but a new fence and gate will be erected around the new proposed site that'll still secure the recycling center from the rest of the landfill when the landfill's not in operation.
All right. Sounds good. Any other questions? Councilor McGee?
So it's still 24-hour operation. The, the other piece, is that particular land that is, that currently is our land, is our recycling station, is, that's obviously our land, both centers. We've been renting that? Forgotten. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor McGee. It's currently a lease that's up December 31st of this year. We do not own the land that the recycling center's on currently.
And what was the lease? Do you recall what the lease rental was?
500 a year.
Okay. All right. Someone like to make a motion for this? Councilor Wheeler?
Yeah, I move that council approve the relocation of the recycling center as proposed.
All right. Comments, questions, or debates? All in favor? That is carried. Uh, landfill request for proposal.
Thank you again. So basically, administration is bringing the landfill, it is finally here, the official landfill operations services, RFP. All the changes that were talked about in the last GMP have been reflected, or reflected, except for 3.27.2. Just to hedge off at the pass, Councilor Wheeler, they didn't affect that change. So this is the final, final draft with the reflected change in it. So I did catch that one when they missed it. So everything that was talked about last GMP is reflected for change. So I'm open. Any questions?
All right. Any questions for administration? Councilor Dodds?
So will this be an open bid?
Sorry. Thank you, Councilor Dodds. Yes, it is. Unfortunately, how, how the open bid results will look drastically different than typical proposal because most projects, they go, well, I'll do it for 10, I'll do it for 20,000. This will kind of be a per-tonnage fee, so it'll look a little different, but it'll be essentially the same.
So is the document, as it's outlined, and we always have the thing, I know there's local interest in doing something like this, and whether or not, you know, we don't want to hold their hand because it's, you know, we have to make sure it's fair for everyone, but will there be ample opportunity for anyone interested locally that maybe doesn't, hasn't been through this process before to make sure they're well aware of it and how they can best submit a proposal?
That's correct. I mean, we'll have it on APC and also local, local social media platforms. Yeah, and for a full month. I mean, we can't teach them how to fill out the proposal, but they'll have ample opportunity to bid on it, for sure.
Okay. And I'm assuming if they have any questions, you'll be available to answer them?
For sure. In the RFP, it does say for any questions to contact Sunny. And I'm also going to be engaging Sonne Vera as a neutral third party to help with evaluation and select, or recommendation of selection, just so that it kind of gives a nice unbiased element in it too as well. So not saying that there would be a problem, but just for any sort of possible backlash.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Councilor Dodds?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion that council approve the landfill operation RFP as presented.
Right. Any comments, questions, or debate on that? Councilor Peebles?
So just to be clear, so before, we had the current folk hauling it back and forth, correct? And we were charged, how much per year was that?
Thank you, Councilor Peebles. This is just for the landfill operation, like the cell, the cell facework, not the residential garbage pickup. Different, separate.
Councilor Yamana?
Just, just from my understanding, who's currently doing that part? Is it GFL or?
Okay. Is there any other comments, questions, or debates? Because, okay, go ahead.
I do, just for clarification for me, once these tenders are received, who reviews them?
Thank you, Councilor Ballas. So the selection committee will essentially comprise of myself, Sunny, and Sonne Vera International as independent consultants for the evaluation.
And then is it presented to council for final approval?
Yes, at the, I guess it wasn't identified in the back of the RFP, but the timeline I've devised so that essentially if council approves on this, it's going out tomorrow. The closing will be September 17th, and then we'll have about roughly two weeks to do evaluation criteria. And then I'm bringing it to October 6, council meeting for approval of the recommendation.
So my question is, we would not be aware of the ones that were not accepted or have the privilege of seeing them?
Well, we can bring the, we can bring the bid results. Yeah. Yeah. We can bring that forward.
Anything else? All right. So the motion is that council approve the landfill operations RFP as presented. All in favor? That is carried. We're done our decision items. We're now into our department reports, planning and development.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council. So with planning and development, we're really busy right now. There's lots of applications on the go, so the departments are keeping very busy. We are also working on implementing a citizen request portal. So we currently have one with Citywide and are looking to compare it to the Access E11 that was presented sometime last week. So we'll be having a meeting with the particular company to see if it provides anything more than what our Citywide citizen request portal provides. And then there's been quite a few meetings with developers. So again, there's a lot of forecasted development in the horizon. So yeah, that's it for planning and development.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions? Counsel Dodds?
So do you feel that there is more construction, like houses being built and stuff like that happening right now, or have you noticed yet?
Yes. So far, we've had one, and then there's a few more that are coming. So we have another application, and hopefully we'll see more from there. Yeah. And a few things happening in the commercial sector as well.
Any other questions? Where are we at with the school? I just remember this being like a shovel-ready project. They wanted it started March, and so they probably ready for next building season, I'm guessing.
Yeah. So about the school, we're still waiting on some information from the contractor before we can move forward with the film permit application.
Okay, excellent.
Have you received the report from Alberta transportation?
Not as of yet, no.
So are you anticipating like a development permit or anything coming from Wildrose School Division? Or have you heard anything in regards to that?
We've already received an application, so we're just waiting on additional information. Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to infrastructure and engineering. Mr. Onick?
Good afternoon. So for infrastructure engineering update, sidewalks are almost complete. We got a little bit more yet to go. Pot-hauling is ongoing, line painting, well, more importantly, the crosswalks, that's ongoing. However, we ran out of white paint, and apparently because of COVID, there seems to be a raw material shortage, so we're waiting for more to come in. For water treatment plant cell five rehab project, it is now complete. We're just waiting on compaction testing before we can do substantial completion for that project, but that went really well and actually under budget, so that's also another nice thing. The storm ponds, sonar surveys for the town are complete. Unfortunately, for how long they've been left, it's going to become a capital item for next year just because of the sheer cost of how much siltation there is in the ponds. And of course, we all know landfill operation RFP went through today, so we'll be tendering it here by Friday. And the bridges, I don't know how many of you noticed, but the three are installed in front of Frankmatic. They need a little bit of asphalt work to try to square up to the top plate for the walking structure part of it. And then Peace Park and the little one at the corner of 43rd Street and 55th, that'll be done here in about a week, week and a half. So open any questions?
Bridges look good. Counsel Wheeler, and then Counsel McGee?
I'm curious about the new bridges, and if you would say they are pet-friendly.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. So even though they're installed, they're not quite done yet. We're going to do a center strip of expanded metal down the middle. So it might not be stiletto-friendly, but it'll be easier for strollers and the little critters.
That would be a great thing.
Counsel McGee?
And the similar bridges in Peace Park, are you doing the same thing?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor McGee. It saves a lot of money for materials and also engineer design if we try to keep everything uniform.
And the little bridge that's... Because when I ride my bike down in West Valley there, that's very, it's probably the most dangerous one that we haven't actually fixed because it's a tight corner.
The old one's out as of yesterday, and the new one's going in either, it'll either be here already or by the end of tomorrow. Yeah, yeah, be prepared.
Loadout. Got it. Similar bridge?
Yes.
Counsel Dodds?
So I did see, and I can't remember where now, where was there an additional bridge being put?
Thank you, Counselor Dodds. So there is the big one we did at the Omni Pond. The little one Counselor McGee is talking about a little bit northeast of there, by the dog park. That one's getting fixed.
Okay, okay.
The three in front of the high school, the one that follows the trail going out 43rd Street before it turns on to 55, that little guy, and then one across the road on the Peace Park side, that one's also getting done.
Okay, good. Yeah, no, they look really good.
Yeah. All the bridges in town will be done.
Oh, good. Fantastic. And then just too about the ponds, kind of going back to the ponds. So are we looking at different fountains or different setup or something for the... Like I know that we've had this discussion a bit, like throughout the summer and stuff because of, I think we had talked a little bit about leeches and goldfish sometimes, you know, cause them to not be, to be working properly. And I know the one in Aston View, I just see dachshund constantly. And I'm just wondering, like, will we be replacing them, or do they need to be replaced? Or what's the problem kind of with the fountain?
The problem with the fountains, it's not the design of the fountain itself. In Northview Pond with every, well, there's naturally leeches there, and then people are releasing goldfish in there. So we've had to put screens on the impellers so that it doesn't suck them through and plug it off. But the main problem with all of them except for Northview is the siltation, is that the silt is built up so much that essentially the pond is slowly sucking silt off of the bottom because you don't have that spatial, you know, emptiness. So if we do de-sledge these ponds, it will really help the future of the fountains and help them flow a bit better because as they slowly get choked off, then you just see the water stream about that high. So it would definitely help that problem.
Counselor Wheeler?
I was just wondering about the sidewalk in front. When you're going through all the bridges, there's the one down, not in Peace Park before Peace Park. And the sidewalk that kind of goes, follows, like you go across the bridge, and then it would be like around the corner right there. There's been asphalt laid over the cement sidewalk, and the asphalt's all chipping off. Is that on the redo list this year or maybe next?
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. It's not on the list for this year because I was more focusing on like critical residentials, but it is on the list for next year, depending on how gracious this council is for funding for sidewalk replacement for next year.
Question. We're on our sidewalk replacement. Those are all like wheelchair accessible and friendly and everything with the proper curbage, I guess, right? Are they when we're putting in new sidewalks?
Counsel Dodds, you mean as we like address the areas? Yes. So there was a couple identified to me, you know, to put wheelchair accesses here. And even the sidewalk study says, you know, on this stretch, there should be one. So like as we go through that sidewalk study, we will follow those recommendations. So if it says, you know, like there should be crosswalk here, there should be wheelchair, we'll address that as we get to that particular stretch.
And the underground work that was happening in front of St. Anthony's and Frankmatic, that was, wasn't us, was it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, it wasn't. It was actually Wildrose School Division's initiative to build a intranet system between the four schools, while three existing, one proposed. So really, it was just giving them approval, but it was entirely their project and their cost.
Yeah, it looked like they were putting some cables in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Just one last point. I forgot to ask, the new recycling station, we have cameras currently on the ones that we have. We don't? Anyway, are we putting cameras?
I thank you, Counselor McGee. I have actually talked to Sunny, especially with us having Starlink at the landfill, that that would be a very easily addressed thing. We could definitely put cameras there for sure.
Excellent. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to health and safety. Ms. Law?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilors. So our summer students are starting to give their notice dates and return back to school. We've had a really good group of students this year. Their communication, their leadership, their ownership of the equipment, you know, they've been, they've been very good, very due diligence. It was a good group of students this year. Their biggest hazard was probably the wasps everywhere they went, just like everybody else. Safe work permits. We recently have, we've done a project, a few projects with issuing safe work permits to our contractors, just to, and we've kind of got our books made and everything. So it's something that we'll be having all our managers and supervisors do. When contractor comes on site, we remain prime contractor, and we issue them the permit to go to work. This permit identifies the hazards and gives them the permission to do a certain job in a certain time. So we'll be working on that the next, probably the next two weeks. Vaccination. I'm working on a vaccination program, not for COVID, but working for handling of human waste, wastewater and sewage. So our water treatment plants, and when they use the flush truck, just some of the vaccinations that they should have, strongly suggested, it's not going to be mandatory, that they should have while working in those around that stuff. And that's about all I have.
All right. Any questions? Counsel Commander?
Thank you. Just interesting, when you use that safety sync program, and it was cool that, you know, people can go through that, and then they can get some items when they do courses and all that. So just wondering, are we still continuing doing that? And we are, you know, we are with the staff with that as well?
Yes, we're continuing with safety sync. And, you know, we make, we put the onus back on the managers to make sure that there are the workers that are compliant with reviewing their procedures and practices and everything.
Good. Anything else? All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to community services and FCSS. Ms. Gresen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The aquatic facility, I think everybody is noticing the rapid increase of the wall structures going up. As of last Tuesday, our site superintendent, we were exactly 14 hours behind the schedule. So something that they say they can easily make up. So not too concerned, not too concerned. So while it has not been great for the farming community, the weather has certainly been great for the construction of the aquatic facility without a doubt. And so lots of activity now. Once it gets closed in in October, all of the action starts happening inside to put all of the pool mechanical in the basins in. So people will see for several months, nothing new happening because they won't be able to see anything inside. But they'll be busy. The aquatic fundraising committee, they've been busy. Thank you to those people who participated in the jail for bail. Cute video, Counselor Peebles. But they're doing great, but they're always looking for new members to add to the committee because... That's what I, I just finished recording it down.
I'm wondering with us building the pool, if there would be an opportunity to do a time capsule, to put something somewhere, whether it's in the facility or on the outside so we can easily get it out in 30, 50, whatever years, but that they could put something in and they could auction off there's, you know, like one foot by one foot space to you put stuff in or something.
Okay, I'll bring that forward. We just had a meeting Tuesday night, but I'll let Lorene know. Yeah, and then, like I said, the sponsorship's coming along great. As far as the Omoplex, Thunder Camp is underway. Ice, that started this week, and they'll be starting out the plan for Omni Two Ice, to have it ready for September. Pool, fall registration is filling up nicely. Media registration night, September 1st, for anybody in the community that needs to know. Just a couple of events as well, too. DV 100, September 11th, the community dinner with the community foundation this Friday, and Skate Park Jam at the skate park at the Borat Fort, and Skate Park tomorrow, from 11 to 4. So that's my quick and dirty report.
What day specifically is this pool, the swimming pool supposed to be open in November?
Oh, my goodness, Mr. Mayor.
I was curious. Well, they said in November. My daughter's birthday is November 14th, and I promised her that she can have a birthday party in the pool, so.
At this, at this point in time, our IPD team is confident that they will be done prior to November 22nd. That was sort of the date they were targeting, but I don't want to say anything, but it could be, if everything goes well, it could be as early as September. But then we still have to have some time to do the transition over and the training for all of the staff, not just in terms of the new sightlines and how to get used to the naditorium, but also in terms of the mechanical system as well, so.
Don't forget about it anyway, so. Counsel Ballas?
I just noticed the blocks, the walls, the blocks on the walls, they're narrow. Is that the standard block that you use for pools?
Yes, Counsel, that is standard. And of course, there'll be the additional insulation and the cladding. So everything else will be, of course, on the inside, cladded both inside and out. So you'll have that.
Okay. September 5th for public skating, is that the anticipated start date? I called the Omoplex the other day, and that's what they said. But they said it might be earlier.
And your news, I'll go with your news.
I did book the ice for Monday to go skating, so. Counsel Dodds?
I remembered. So how are we assuring that we are going to have a slide built in the pool or be budgeting for the slide?
Thank you, Counsel. As we enter into a new budget season, this will be one of the items that we will be bringing forward to council on the capital budget. Again, too, even with the fundraising committee, we have informed them that yes, the community needs to understand is that until we can get enough funding in place, the water slide is a future item. And we know that there'll be a lot of critiquing about why is there no water slide in the new aquatic center, but we're hoping we can get a sponsor for it. With a sponsor, we're pretty certain that we can make the budget work for the rest of that. But it will be on the capital budget as one of the request items to this council.
And then can you just remind me what the sponsorship for the slide was, what the amount was again?
We are actually hoping for $150,000 for the water slide sponsorship. Don't quote me on that, but that's what I recall from the sponsorship package.
Counsel McGee?
Community dinner and Drayton Valley Community Foundation, a couple of asks. One, I saw the, we were actually doing the street and putting the leaves out, and we're going to come through with the sweepers, I assume, and do all of that. They talked about stringing of lights and things like that. So we're all on board and good to go because it's going to be a ton of fun, I think. It's great.
Yeah, let's just hope that the weather holds out for us. But yes, no. Owen met with Rob Mulligan a couple of weeks ago already and outlined what the requirements were. So yeah, they'll be sent.
So the stringing of lights, I'm imagining sort of that thing, and we could, he literally could leave them up right through till, I don't sure what you're thinking about around the stringing of lights, but.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And you would, might consider keeping them on?
Haven't gone there, but okay. Thanks. Okay, anything else? All right. We'll move on to protective and emergency services. Mr. Thompson is not here, so no report then. Corporate services and finance, Ms. Thompson?
Good afternoon. So we are busy getting together all the information for Corvus to do their utility rate study right now. And it is a lot of information, but we're excited to get this done and have an accurate amount that our rates should be at. And then we're also working on improving some of our documents for like our budget documents so that this next budget season can be as smooth as as smooth as possible. And then on top of that, we have our revenue manager, she's busy researching ways to collect tax revenues and collect more than maybe, uh, be more efficient than we've been in the past. And working on a bunch of different summer projects and things that we don't usually get to, get to during our busy times, so that is what finance is up to.
All right, any questions? Sounds good. Uh, we'll move on to our CEO and administration report. Mr. Resin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as was just mentioned earlier, we're heading into twenty twenty-two budget process. Um, of course, uh, looking to this council to sort of lay the, the count, cornerstone of what the budget might be looking like for twenty twenty-two. And obviously, uh, final decision to be made by the new council after the election. Uh, administration is also busy with, uh, filling up its, uh, required positions, um, IT position, general manager, planning and development, uh, two of the more critical ones at this point in time. Uh, we're hoping that we will have, um, some final notifications, uh, by the end of this week on both of those positions. Um, I can't speak to anything right now because of just verbal and nothing written down, uh, and approved yet. Um, I want to thank Luani's, um, Juan, um, for stepping in, uh, on planning and development and working through these two big things. Uh, that's a, a major task for both of the, the items, both with the farmer's market bylaw as well as the IDP bylaw. So I want to thank him for that. Um, aside from that, I'll keep it short, but I do want to introduce Victor Brujon, who is with us today. Uh, Victor is our new general manager of enterprise and growth, just started this week, uh, thrown into the thick of things right away. Um, but, uh, his experience, uh, I'm really pleased to have Victor join us. I will ask him to come up and say a few words, introduce himself, uh, to council and, uh, maybe just say a few words about himself and what he's looking forward to.
Welcome. Seven. All right. Well, thank you very much and, uh, welcome to the, the team and, uh, we look forward to working with you and well, some of us for the next two months and others of us, hopefully longer, so. All right, thank you. All right, any questions for Mr. Resin? All right, so council reports, Counselor Dodds?
Quick, I wasn't expecting that.
Right out of the gate.
Right out of the gate. Um, July twenty-third, I attended municipal role in reconciliation through AMMA, which was very interesting. I find that, um, there's always um, more information that I can be learning about here and, um, it's exciting and it's, um, sometimes at, at times embarrassing the stuff that you don't know, so it's good, I think, to learn and, and expand your knowledge on this. So yeah, it was very interesting. I enjoyed it. Um, several education meetings again since the last council. Um, I had an interview with the U of A, um, research team in regards to the zero fee, uh, research and granting opportunities. Always exciting to be working with the university. They're, again, a great partner at the table. I can't say that enough, so just, yeah, really excited to have them. Um, healthcare aid, very excited about the program that's coming. Twenty-four students, it's the largest that we've had to date. The number keeps kind of increasing. I'm thinking that we're up to three classes potentially and, um, we're going to have to put a hold on it, I think, at some point and say enough is enough. So, um, we did have the site visit interview, or I did have a site visit interview, um, with, um, with, uh, with the process of the lab approval, so we're just kind of anticipating that and when we can get the okay there, move that forward. I also attended, um, the municipal leaders caucus. Definitely not the same as face-to-face. Doing it virtually is, I'm so done with that and I just can't wait to get in a room with people and, and socialize again, so it was good, but not as good as definitely as it could be. Um, I had a meeting with Minister Schweitzer and Mark Smith in regards, in regards to rural education. Um, of course, the model that we're creating here when it comes to jobs economy and seeing how this is all connected. Uh, sustainability committee, we're planning some great things there. We're hoping that we can, um, kick off Taste of Drayton Valley on September twenty-sixth, and of course, we'll have the lanterns on the pond happening again on September twenty-second. Um, attended arbitration meeting and then, of course, had, um, had fun participating in the jail and bail fundraiser. That was last Friday. That was a lot of fun, too. And, uh, definitely a little bit of anxiety there, waiting to be arrested. I'm not going to lie, but, uh, all in all, that's my report.
All right, thank you very much. Counselor Commander?
Thank you. Um, yeah, not a whole lot to report, but I was in vacation in Ha. Had the opportunity to go to Niagara Falls as well as Toronto and, you know, since seeing some sights there. But most importantly, I had a chance to, uh, meet with, uh, a college there and tour a college as well as discuss, um, opportunities to bring them here and bring some international students hopefully here as well. Um, other than that, uh, few education meetings, meetings as, uh, Counselor Dodds mentioned and, um, I had a meeting with the, uh, U of A research coordinator, uh, to discuss our education initiatives. Um, you know, it was very, uh, exciting to, um, share the, uh, information and the knowledge that, uh, what we are doing here as well as, uh, share the knowledge what they are doing as well. Uh, it was very worthwhile and exciting meeting with them, with them. And on, on the third, uh, meeting with the minister, uh, jobs, economy and innovation, uh, Minister Schweitzer, uh, which we discussed, uh, some of those opportunities that we are doing here as well. Other than that, uh, normal council meetings and GNP. That's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. To be Mayor McGee. Here, microphone.
We've cleared the, uh, the bush in behind, or in front of, behind the senior center for the parking lot. I'm not sure how much we'll get done. We're just putting the RFP together for, uh, or the tender package together through, uh, our engineering consultants. Um, how much we'll get done this year, don't know, but, um, one of the things that's raising a particular flag is that you now can see the building. Really see the building. And so I, I'm working with the niece to see if there's a way that between the town and Ark and themselves, whether or not we could paint it or, uh, get some volunteers or even, uh, get to Bree Atkins, who did the mural, to see if we could do a, a seniors mural, like kids and seniors or those kinds of things, which I think we can do. It's just a matter of combining, uh, our efforts to see if we, um, can manage that and, and so that it's, it's quite a, it's quite a sight to see it cleared. And, uh, so I think the, that's the only thing for me to, to, to come before us at some point.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Counselor Wheeler?
It's been quiet with most of the committees except sustainability, trying to get organized for September, um, and then just working through on the administration side of, of council here, so nothing to update on. Most of my committees have been on, it is over the summer, so. We're supposed to have healthy communities coalition, but they didn't have enough for quorum, so we just moved it to September.
Counselor Ballas?
I follow Counselor Wheeler. I have very little to report, so it's been a quiet month for me, other than, uh, doing some holidaying, so that's it for me.
Counselor Peebles?
Yeah, thank you, Your worship. I have nothing to report.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, for me, um, it has been a pretty quiet month as well. One thing we'll point out is, uh, I did attend the open house on August sixth that Brazu County put on at the Breton Fire Hall for their fiscal energy project. Uh, certainly looks like an interesting project and we'll see how that, uh, moves forward and we wish them all the best in, uh, accommodating them and getting that project off the ground, cause it does appear to be a large job creator. I'm just going off the information that was provided, but, um, yeah, well, uh, interesting to see how that moves forward, so we look forward to working with them if they need any of our assistance. Other than that, um, information items, nine point one, the Brazu Foundation meeting minutes, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one and June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Nine point two, economic development committee meeting minutes, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Nine point three, sustainability committee meeting minutes, June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Nine point four, Drayton Valley RCMP stats, July twenty twenty-one. Can I get a motion to accept these as information? Counselor Dodds, all in favor? That is carried and we will adjourn our meeting at one thirty PM.